Good evening, we are right at seven o'clock and so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Christina, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, we have an agenda before you. I'll entertain a motion to approve for any changes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion is approved. Our first item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. I will note that on tonight's agenda, we do have one public hearing scheduled related to our consideration of the municipal consent for reconstruction of Highway 97. And so if you are here to speak on that topic, you are welcome to speak in open forum, or you're welcome to speak at that agenda item. If you want to speak to council on any other topic this evening, open forum is your opportunity to do so. So, once we've gotten through tonight's names, I'm happy to open it up if there's anyone else who would like to add anything. And also just noting for the record, we did have an interested party who provided some materials to council this evening at the council dais, which is kind of entering them into the record for open forum. It's related to the potential realignment of Forest Road in consideration of County Road 32. Let's move into open forum, and our first gentleman this evening is Bob Muske. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Bob Muske. I reside at 7535 North Shore Trail. And I am here, I was asked by one of my neighbors to speak on his behalf. He cannot attend tonight, so he drafted a letter for, and I told him I would read it for him. So, this is from Mr. Tom and Pam Chaw to the Forest Lake City Council. My name is Tom Chaw, and I live at 7480 North Shore Trail. I want to thank the council members for listening to the homeowners' concerns in reevaluating the water quality project along North Shore Trail. I also want to thank Tim Olson for his sincere listening to our concerns and trying to adjust for them. I want to express to you our complete displeasure with the hole that we have in front of our lawn. We have received many comments from people walking by and visitors that are not positive, that I can't say in this public forum. As I've said before, this was completed, this would fill with leaves from the northwest wind, and has become a good place for people to throw trash, liquor bottles, beer cans from cars driving by. It is way too deep and way too steep for me to mow, to pick up the leaves, and I have to go down there to pick up the trash. I've also lost all options for parking in front of my house, which I had before. When it was flat, it was very safe to park way off the road. I have looked at the three options that will be presented to you, and I would encourage you to choose to restore the area back to its pre-construction condition. There could be a slight drop of one foot to collect the water in that area with the drain tile put under it. In closing, I thank you for listening to the homeowners' concerns, and I wish this would have been done before the project was started. I again ask you to choose the option to restore the area back to its pre-construction condition. Thank you, Tom and Pam Chaw.
Thank you.
And I as well live across the street from this project, and I just would like to voice my opinion to have it restored as well. I have little kids, and it is quite dangerous. It's very steep. Right now, they're full of water. I understand the need for them. I just think restoring it back to its original condition, it's so unsightly right now, would be the benefit for everyone in our area. So, thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you so much. Next to open forum, Greg Bruss.
Good evening.
I'm Greg Bruss. I reside at 20 or 23030 Hayward Avenue, and I am just here to voice my opinion for option three, to restore it back to its conditions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have Blake Dalbec.
Blake Dalbec, 23020 Hayward Avenue North. I would also like to see it restored to where it was before. Couple different options for problems. How much of this water will go into the lake right now if it's sitting in the ditch? So, our major concern right now is how shallow all the lakes are. So, now that we reconstruct over by Tim's Marina, all that water, I don't think is going to make it into the lake. And I don't think the water that's going to flow in the ditch is going to make it in the lake as well. Our kids were out there sledding down in the hill today that they made. So, major eyesore for sure. Not to mention all the tree roots that I had to hire somebody, a landscaper, to come in, fill in all the holes, and resaw, and losing major trees in the yard. So, I'd as well like to get it restored.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron, is it Mitlov?
Mikolov.
Mikolov. Apologies for the last name.
Okay, no sweat. I'll take any variation. Aaron Mikolov, 7490 North Shore Trail. My husband's with me tonight. I agree with these good gentlemen. I think it would be best to have it restored to its, you know, previous standing. I really don't know what was gained from this big project. I think previously it was adequate for drainage. Many years ago, 20 years ago, the big culvert at the end of our driveway used to drain directly into the lake. My husband and I put in about $20,000 of our own money to plan a rain garden down there. So, that's already existing. I don't know if anyone took any consideration of that. I mean, Prairie Restoration put that together. Also, what was pulled up from our yard was a bunch of trees that were doing natural, you know, cleaning of the water. So, I'm not sure what was gained. There was really no communication prior to this project. I found out about it because I happened to be home that day and saw some surveyors measuring my land, and nothing before that. That's what started this whole thing, you know? So, I think the communication has been really lax all throughout the project. It took way too long, three seasons practically. And what frustrates me, and this is just opinion, is that now all that money was spent, all that time was spent, and now we have to spend more money on this project. I think it's really frustrating. And I don't even know who was running it, to be quite honest. Was it the city? Was it the watershed? Was it these companies? I don't know who was running it. So, if you guys can answer some of those questions, I think we just need more transparency on this.
Understood. We do have this on the agenda this evening, and some of the opportunity for all those questions to get answered.
Okay, great. All right, that's it.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here. And Aaron Meyer.
Hello, Aaron Meyer, 7363 233rd Street North. Neighbors with everyone here. I've spoken a lot of this stuff. I think a lot's already been said at the previous meetings. Just reiterating what they all said. I mean, a lot of them are just kind of summing it up because we've all spoken this. I feel like a lot more could be said, but just a quick, couple of quick notes and thoughts to add, which has been said. I think it was poorly planned, it was poorly communicated, and it was poorly executed. There's hundreds of thousands that were spent on this, as well as hundreds of thousands of damage to the property, and the property values, which again, selfishly, it affects my house. It was not touched, but more so for our neighbors. There's a couple of neighbors that couldn't make it. I don't know if they even knew about this, or what. I'm not sure with the people's name on the corner that has a 40-foot culvert now in there. This is a giant ditch. I mean, I don't know if any of you guys have seen it, too. I know you guys in the ends have. Did you ever take a look by there, drive by there? It's atrocious. It's crazy. And then the safety concerns are obvious. I've only gotten out for two walks since it's been allegedly spring there. Now it's back to winter, and we'll see spring again soon, but it's crazy. I mean, you got this tiny little area to walk on down by them. Not to mention, like you said, tons of kids playing there. And they want to play in those ditches, of course, but it's not safe. It's full of water. I took some pictures. I thought I could share them, but I mean, you can drive by there and see them. They're literally full of water. So, they're not draining either. They're not doing their alleged job. So, can't say enough. Return it back to normal, whatever that takes. Figure out another way to filter water into the lake, or whatever. You know, whatever you gotta do. I just think it was a, I can't say enough, just terrible, poorly planned in every which way. So, that's about it.
Thank you for being here. That's the end of those that are signed up. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak in open forum? And then, is there anybody online, Abby?
This gentleman here.
Oh, I'm s-
To answer your question, Mayor Bain, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Mikluf. I'm Aaron Mikluf's husband, 7490 North Shore Trail. Just want to say you guys spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this. What we really need there is a bike path. We have a gigantic park there that, we've been there 20 years. It's walking on that road. I mean, I think there's even been articles about it. "Biking is out of the question. Walking is taking your life in your hands." So, instead of digging a trench where, you know, has all the beauty of a sewage pit, I mean, maybe we should build a bike path. You guys are going to build a bike path from the neighborhood behind us that goes to Coen Camp Park? You could easily build one that goes around, that connects that, and would connect all those houses on there. It would be a much better use of the money than this. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So, anybody else that would like to speak on this topic, or any other topic this evening for open forum? All right, with that, we will close open forum and bring conversation back to council. Council, for your consideration tonight is the consent agenda. I would move that, I would move for approval of consent agenda items A, and then C through F, and move item B to our regular agenda. Is there a second, or any other changes?
No second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. And then, consideration of consent agenda item 6B. Is there a motion, or any discussion? I just need to abstain.
May I make a motion that we approve item 6B, the approval in minutes of March 11th, regular meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I said aye. I meant to abstain. Apologies. That's on autopilot. All right, we have one approval, one abstent, or four approvals and one abstention. Let's move on to our regular agenda. For first consideration tonight is item 7A, which is the municipal consent for reconstruction of Highway 97. Council will consider resolution number 3252402. There will be a public hearing for this item this evening. We'll hear first from Ryan, take an initial first round of questions or comments from council, and then we'll open up the public hearing. Ryan, floor is yours.
Mayor, City Council, tonight we have a resolution to approve the final layout for the state project, 8201-21 on Trunk Highway 97. We also have MINDOT here, Dimitri, Adam, and Victor to present the project and go through a presentation for you tonight prior to approving the resolution. So, could we proceed into that?
Perfect.
That way, if there's any questions, you'll have a comprehensive stuff in front of you. So, let's move with that. So, Dimitri will come up and do a presentation.
Should be coming on. Just give it a second there.
Good evening.
I'll just give it a second to the monitor. So, anyone in the public that's interested can do a presentation?
Dimitri, did you use your computer, or the city computer?
This is the city's computer.
Anyone test it before? The mic works. I don't know.
Oh, they're all plugged in.
The other option, we could try to just put it into a staff computer at the clerk's podium. Do we want to try that? Do you have a USB?
Yeah.
If you want to bring the USB over, we can try it from my computer. Do you have a password on it? Middle?
Yep.
Yep, why don't you open which one it is? Can advance your slides if you still?
Presentation and a video. We'll have to switch. This is the video. You'll switch to the video.
You'll let me know when to switch to the video.
There we go.
All right. All right. I think technical difficulties are complete, so if we get started, if that's okay with everyone?
Perfect.
Thank you. My name is Dimitri Tomasevic. I'm the MINDOT East Area Engineer for MINDOT. I work with communities in Chisago and Washington County. Today, I'm here to present the municipal consent request for the Highway 97 project. With me is Victor Vassas, who's the project manager, and Adam Josephson, the area manager for MINDOT. As part of today's municipal consent agenda, MINDOT's submitting the final geometric layout for approval by the city, also known as municipal consent. Information will include the submitted packet of maintenance, cost of participation considerations. I'll also talk about the existing condition and what the proposed project is proposing. So, existing condition, we have 1.8 miles of roadway from Hornsby to Forest Road. The road connects the community to Highway 61 and Highway 35. Today's condition is an existing two-lane rural roadway, meaning it has two lanes in each direction. There's left turn lanes at three existing signalized intersections. It has sloped shoulders and ditch sections as it is today. Next slide. Project needs, the primary need was pavement, so poor pavement condition initiated the project. There's been 51 crashes in the 2013-2015 timeframe. Still using the data from when we originally scoped the project, but we'll be updating that for future presentations. There's a need for stormwater and drainage in the area. There's no existing bike facilities and no connection to the Hardwood Creek Regional Trail. So, project goals are just to address all the needs that were identified within this project corridor. Next slide, please. So, summary of work, as I mentioned, it started out with just a pavement preservation, which means just a mill and a whuley of the pavement. But, all those needs identified, a larger need for a project, which is a full reconstruct. There will be some signal upgrades and lighting in the project area. The project will construct center medians, curb and gutter. There'll be some access management control. There'll be a brand-new single-lane roundabout constructed with the project, upgraded drainage, construction of that multi-use trail, and a connection to Hardwood Creek Regional Trail. Current estimate is about $17 million. So, the typical section in front of you will identify some of the changes the project will take on. The current speed limit is 55 miles per hour. We're using a design speed of 45 miles per hour. I should point out that once the project is constructed by state statute, we will conduct a speed study to understand what the drivers will actually travel along this corridor, and that will set the ultimate speed limit for the project. How the cross-section changes, it'll have six-to-10-foot shoulders, so primary six-foot shoulders, 10 wherever there's residential driveways, total for garbage and mail delivery services to occur. So, the driving lane will be 13-foot, which includes the gutter, the two-foot of gutter. The boulevard is six-to-10 feet. There'll be a 10-foot trail constructed. Typical cross-section, as I mentioned, is that six-foot shoulder plus 13-foot lane. It's a total width of 19 feet. There have been questions about the ability for emergency services to pass. So, that 19 feet will account for stalled vehicle and the ability for emergency services to pass. The curbs will be designed so they're mountable, meaning if there is an emergency, someone could mount the curbs, both from an emergency standpoint and if a car is disabled. The length is 1.8 miles, and the change in median is about 1.4 miles. I have a three-minute visualization video that will identify how the project is changing, so anyone in the public can see, and that staff and council. And I'll also describe some of the improvements as the video flies through. The project begins at Highway 61 Roundabout. I'll turn you to a split screen of how the road is changing. So, just past the Hardwood Creek Trail, Forest Road, you'll see a median between the access point here and a brand-new connection to the Hardwood Creek Regional Trail. You'll see the center median continue along with a trail that's on the south side of Highway 97, paralleling the highway. There's a connection to the future development that we've been coordinating with city staff. At Fonda, through public comment period, we've provided a full access point at this location, which means left turn lanes. At Floral Bay, there will be a median in this location, which will allow drivers to go to the roundabout, or make a U-turn at the previous opening I just mentioned. Again, you can see the urbanized section with that curb and gutter, the median. There'll be a brand-new roundabout constructed at Fenway. As the corridor continues towards Highway 35, the median will go towards the next intersection. And again, you can see the trail continuing paralleling the entire Highway 97. Falcon will have access closed from 97, and Falcon Avenue will account for that future connection that we've been coordinating with city staff. Access to Falcon will still be maintained at the signalized intersection, which is currently a signal, and will remain a signal, at Everton Avenue. We've also coordinated with city staff the north leg of Everton Avenue. There'll be construction of a portion of that city leg, and full access will be maintained at Room for Growing Daycare Center. As the median continues through 35, it'll essentially tie into existing condition at the signalized intersection. And right as we end the project, it's essentially the same condition as it is today, with a painted median with full left and right turn lanes at the signalized intersection. This should do, this video does a really nice job of painting the change that will occur in this corridor. Again, we've gotten positive feedback through open house coordination from our last open house, and good coordination with city staff, emergency services, and the local Forest Lake School District. Back to the presentation, please. Next slide, perfect. So, first item is schedule. We've been, we typically scope projects about five years out. In 2022, we had a conceptual layout where we held a public open house for comment. Again, really positive feedback from the neighborhood and general change for the project. Continuing to work on the environmental and preliminary design in 2023. Right now, we're in the environmental phase and final design, where we're looking for municipal consent of the final layout. We anticipate a pre-construction meeting to be held at a time to be determined, so prior to construction, and construction will take place in 2025 and 2026. Next slide, please. So, in terms of how we're going to build it, we've evaluated and included, well, evaluating how we're going to build it, last time we saw you in the public, we were still in the evaluation phase. We weren't quite sure how to construct the project. The need to maintain local access was an important consideration. The need to maintain business access was also an important consideration during construction. Utility impacts and when those utility would need to be reconstructed was a key timing. So, we've actually had two meetings with utility companies to understand where their utilities are and how long it will take for them to relocate. We presented in the past, there's some bad soils in the area, and those have their own timeframe for excavation and replacement. We've been closely working with city staff, emergency services, the Forest Lake School District, and evaluated really three options. We looked at temporary widening. Can we just build this with just some temporary widening? Could we do a directional closure, where we only build one half at a time? We evaluated a full closure. Can this project be constructed in one year? And we evaluated a staged construction, meaning we would have to do half at a time. And the selected alternative is the staged construction, which is a two-year construction. Next slide, please. So, when I say a two-year construction, that would be in year one, in 2025, closure and construction of the west end. This particular end has quite a bit of muck excavation, and I'm meeting with those utility companies. They're going to need the very They're going to need the very first part of the spring and the early part of that construction season to do utility relocation before the project can actually start. Next slide, please. In year two, we would close and construct the east end now while the west end is open. And in both slides, I should note that access to residential streets and businesses will be maintained at all times. Will need to be maintained. As part of municipal consent, there's an understanding of cost participation. So, as I mentioned, it's approximately a $17 million project. We estimated on the conservative side, $1 million in city cost participation. And that breaks down, just in general categories, that's some cost participation for the signal reconstruction at Everton, the roadway at Everton to the north. The Fenway Roundabout, there would be a city leg for that roundabout. The ponds themselves, so as we are required to do water treatment before it lets out of the system, there's water draining from both the MINDOT roadway and the city roadway. And so, there's a cost participation to construct those ponds and maintain those. And then, there's some construction engineering, and as I noted on here, city utility relocation cost is to be determined. And we haven't quite got into lighting design, if there will be any additional lighting in the local system, so those are to be determined. But on the safe side, we rounded up to approximately that $1 million city cost participation. And as the note says, we're ready at 60%. We'll do another engineer's estimate. And at 100%, we'll do another engineer's estimate. And there'll be a cooperative agreement that gets developed in coordination with the city. And ultimately, the city will approve that, will know that final number. Next slide, please. In terms of city maintenance, MINDOT will have major trail maintenance, and city would have minor trail maintenance. Again, for that pond, we would have a participation of maintenance, just based on the contributing flows. There's some signal maintenance where MINDOT would be the major maintenance and city would be minor. And some lighting maintenance to be determined, so right now, I don't have those listed. But as we design lighting, we'll have a better understanding if there's any maintenance associated with lighting. Next slide, please. So, with that, that covers the project, what's out there today, what's being proposed, city cost participation, city maintenance responsibility, and project schedule and how we would construct it. So, with that, I'd open up to any questions in order to proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. Counsel, let's open up for our first round of questions, any questions you may have before we open up a public hearing. Just real quick, one question that came to mind. You mentioned major and minor trail maintenance. What's the... Help me with the difference.
Sure. So, with our recent communication, MINDOT would be the owner of the trail system. So, that major, one day, when it has to be fully reconstructed, that falls under the major maintenance. And the minor maintenance would be like snow maintenance or... Crack ceiling and mowing, things like that. So, kind of that, just the day-to-day.
Ryan, go ahead.
Mayor City Council, I just want to expand on that because this agreement on the trail is completely different than all our other trails that are within MINDOT's right-of-way. This is a new agreement MINDOT's moving forward with, where all your other trails that are in there right-of-way are there by a limited use permit, where the city is 100% responsible for everything. This case, the trails that are parallel to Highway 97 will fall under that new agreement MINDOT is executing with this project. Therefore, the major reconstruction costs would be 100% MINDOT because it'll default back to the cooperative agreement that we're going to execute with this project. So, when we look back 20 years and need to replace them, MINDOT will see that that's their responsibility. So, that's a little different than if you guys have been around with some of the other trails that have fallen within MINDOT right-of-way. So, that's a good question.
Counsel, any other questions we might have?
No, I didn't. I'm just good to hear the new situation there, so that's good.
Just expand a little further to the trails that jet down Forest Road or Fenway. Those will still be 100% city, which they're along in our right-of-way, our road, so.
That intersection right where Forest Boulevard comes out to Highway 97, that's just going to be right turn out and right turn in, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So, that median, it was kind of going there, but so that median will be right in front of that road, right?
That's correct.
That was my understanding from before, so.
Any other questions before we open up?
Ryan, what kind of, as far as lighting, what would you expect? Or what do you think the city would ask for on that, the part that's not determined?
We haven't had lighting as a request at this point, so MINDOT's just doing the required intersection lighting at the new roundabout and at the signal intersection. You're not doing anything at Forest Road, right? Because there's already some lights there, part of the first project.
And then, as far as the signals, those would be another decision about a color similar to what we just did on 61?
Assume they're blue. That's what I'm going to send the color to the guy, so.
But to expand on that just a little bit further, there will be a design element, right? That question will come back before counsel, is that...
Not specifically, probably.
Okay.
This project has ongoing project management team meetings. All that stuff's discussed. I mean, they're not to that point yet, but they're going to need to package this here this year to get it out for bid. So, if there's something other than blue, then we should have additional conversations at our level.
When you say "blue," is it the... I'm just reflecting back on the conversation we recently had with the county. Is that similar to the questions that we have, or is it just, is it kind of built in that it would be those upgraded?
It would be spec'd at that.
Okay.
So, it would be the same color, number, blue. It's a bunch of numbers and letters, so.
Yes, I understand. Fair, fair. But it's, I think the point is that it's the upgraded... They are the upgraded lights that have the higher design features.
We'd be talking about the signal pole at the intersection of Everton and 97.
Well, I guess I'm thinking more about...
No lighting along the corridor. Not like county-state at Highway 33, where we elected to incorporate that into the project.
That, I think that's the... Do we want to consider that or not? Is that, at this point, we're comfortable with that, or is that something to talk about as things go?
You can always talk about it, but knowing that it was almost $500,000 and just county-state at Highway 32 and then skinnyer footprints, the cost here would be probably triple that, just in lights.
Right.
And the lights that we have at this intersection down here, so it's another thing that was a favorable negotiation with the city in MINDOT, that the MINDOT has 100% responsibility of the lights, and the lights coming all the way up to Forest Road, including even electricity.
Right. So, Ryan, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to understand the kind of the project team's thought process. So, is the thought process that this is a more of a major thoroughfare? And because it's a major thoroughfare, it wouldn't have the same design elements that we might have on some more, like, Conny Road Highway that we just had for Everton Avenue, for example, or downtown? Is that kind of the thought process because of scale?
It's a trunk highway.
Yeah.
It hasn't been discussed to date.
Right, okay.
We kind of talked about the trunk Highway 61 and aesthetics. That has been clearly defined, that aesthetics and lighting is supported through that corridor. And then, the area that would county-state at Highway 33, that was kind of an addition to the bigger picture area. You wanted to focus a lot on Broadway and bleed it into the downtown, and 61 would connect into that. We haven't had that conversation on 32. If that's something that needs to be incorporated in the conversation, that needs to probably be talked about early because that's, you know, more local dollars going into that.
It's a funding issue, you bet.
Yeah.
Short-term and long-term. There's been conversations about gateway signs, but that's about it along this corridor. And that goes back a pretty long time.
And so, just trying to understand where we are with costing so far. So, a monument sign, gateway sign, or any sort of lighting upgrades are not included in what's in the current estimate for local participation?
There's no additional streetlights in the project, and there's no monument sign being built as part of MINDOT's project.
Okay. I feel like this, it just seems like this question should... I feel like we should vet this through. We have a lot of significant, large projects coming up. And we've, I think it'd be helpful to kind of realign on what our policy is and just make sure we understand cost impact of all of that. Do we need, if we wanted to do that for this project, do we need to do that? What's the right timing for that? And does that need to be done before we do anything with municipal consent? Or can we proceed tonight, knowing that we want to have an additional conversation about lighting?
If you want to have an additional conversation, I think you have time for that, but that'll, you know, probably 100% fall on the local level and to deliver that to MINDOT, to incorporate in their plans.
Fair.
Right now, you're really approving the layout of the project, and that's what's been publicly addressed and communicated. And the cost share that's been created to date is the $1 million falls within line of what we budgeted with our construction state aid funds.
Right.
That project needs to get done, you know, lighting or no lighting. And I need to see any kind of a glitch in it because of, you know, an additional...
Like, we still got to do the water and sewer, sanitary sewer and water, but we can't really start that or efficiently can't work through that process until the stormwater piping and all that stuff's done. So, everything at above, everything you saw tonight, you know, that's all laid out, done. All the underground stuff, elevations and stuff is getting finalized before we want to start watering sewers. So, we kind of know where we got to hit and not do it twice.
Go ahead.
Another question regarding the trail. The trail's on the south side. The future commercial growth is going to be on that south side, specifically between Fenway and Everton? Thoughts on that long-term with all that commercial coming and going with that trail? Was there a reason why it's on that side versus the north side?
Because then, we could connect into our local system at Fenway, Everton, and then the Hardwood Creek Trail. If we go on the north side, we lose our connection without having to cross the road. There's several connections allowed through the roadway to get to the south side. But knowing what might come in east of Quick Trip, it might be actually a really good fit for that commercial use and property. It's going to be a nice access then into neighborhoods, connected video to Columbus. But the project can't expand anything to the north. We looked at doing some stuff to the north. But because of the bluffs that occur in the majority of that area or the wetlands that occur there, everything is basically, the footprint's all going, expanding to the south. And if you remember, we did look at a rural section, but the project was more or less forced to go to with curb and gutter because environmental issues and concerns, especially in the DNR property and the wetland impacts that were being initially proposed. So, that's how the project got to the footprint that it did get to. Thanks.
Back to this question of design, I feel like it'd be helpful at a future workshop, if we could just walk through, kind of what are the... Just make sure counsel and staff are on the same page of what are the design assumptions based on different project types? Again, we've got a number of different project types coming up, whether they're fully city-sponsored, state partnership, county partnership, different segments within the community, residential, retail, more of a highway-type scenario like we have here tonight with 97. So, if we could just, I think it'd be helpful to just align on kind of what is the... What has traditionally been the Forest Lake standard for those design, different design elements? And then, again, it gives us an opportunity to just understand kind of what's baked in and maybe gives us some understanding of what the impact might be if we wanted to change that. I think we could all probably benefit of just making sure we're on the same page of what the initial going-in assumption is. Counsel, did I capture that okay? Is that fair? Okay. Back to project specifics to 97. Any other questions before we open up to public hearing? All right. Let's open up public hearing. We will have another opportunity for council questions and conversations after public hearing. Is there anybody that wanted to speak tonight on this topic? If so, please come to the podium, and we'll open the public hearing now. And is there anybody online for the public hearing?
No.
All right. Anybody in the room wanting to speak on the public hearing? Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close public hearing, bring conversation back to counsel. Counsel, any follow-up questions or comments before we consider a resolution tonight? All right. Go ahead.
This has been, you know, this has been talked about for quite some time, and there's been open houses and all kinds of things on it. So, I'm certainly comfortable with it. And so, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 0325-24-02.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Just a quick note to thank MINDOT representatives for being here tonight for a continued partnership on this project. And we've had lots of public engagement and engagement with business owners and residents and impacted parties, so appreciate all of the good work. So, happy to support this tonight. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, consider awarding a bid for our 2024 street maintenance projects, Resolution 3252424. And Ryan, you are also taking this one.
All right. Mayor City Council, tonight, we have the for the bid results and award recommendation for the 2024 street pavement maintenance project. On March 8, 2024, we publicly opened bids for the project. Six bids were received. Staff is recommending that the city council award the base bid plus alternate one. Alternate one is 184th Street, and alternate three is the old Public Works Men Health Fairview Parking Lots. Total contract award would be $1,476,743.79.
Thank you, Ryan. Counsel, any questions related to 2024 street project award?
And then, Ryan, MND Health is going to pay 50% of the alternate three. Is that... Is it 50% of that $87,000?
Yes, part of their agreement or their lease agreement, they will pay 50%. It's not 50% right off the bat. It's a payment plan that they'll...
Right, but I mean, it's 50% of that $87,000. Is that what it is?
Correct, yep.
All right.
And Chief Newman spoke with MND Health, and they were all on board for it. But it's part of the agreement that it's a payment plan back, so I guess they would be paying half of that.
Other questions or comments related to the projects? Dave, I know a consideration of this we had. There were some staff comments, and I'm trying to pull them up in my packet, and I'm failing to find my bookmark. But there were some staff comments related to consideration of the Bridle Pass Trail. Can you just clarify where that stands related to the resolution we're considering tonight?
Yep, so, there's some talk about that trail over the winter, last fall, about getting that updated or fixed. And through research, it was, you know, it's a private trail or it's a privately owned trail by the homeowners association. So, we had an engineer's estimate done, and the thought process was to put this as an alternate for a bid, just to get an actual dollar's cost versus an estimate. We did talk with the school district and the homeowners association after these bids came in, led of some budgetary concerns with the school district. They don't really have the bandwidth to contribute to this, their portion of it. And the homeowners association, they felt comfortable for contributing $5,000 to that total project, which may cover the survey work and, you know, to turn that into a trail easement or a public trail easement. So, at the end of the day, really, the city would be pretty much on the hook for that whole entire thing. You know, I would recommend that the city put this chunk of trail into the next safer routes to school process, that, you know, that could get that whole trail done. That would be staff's recommendation, you know, the next time we apply for that grant, this would be a good one that would cover that.
Thank you. I appreciate the work on looking into it. I have a concern about heading down the path of us maintaining those homeowner association trails. So, if we're going to consider, and I appreciate it's staff's recommendation to not include that, I think if we wanted to include that in the future, we really need to step back and look at what is the slippery slope that we're creating by doing, heading down that path? And just what is our total mileage of homeowner-maintained trails? I would suspect that that would become a frequent ask if that starts to become our policy when we're doing adjacent streets. We could look at it, but we're at such a deficit already right now with funding that I think we've really got to make sure we're not expanding scope unless there's just a slam dunk.
slam dunk reason to do so. So I just wanted to kind of clarify my own position on that. Again, we can always look at it, but I think it's got to be prioritized in the concept of, or with the thought of what is the total exposure if we were to change a policy on that? And I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that topic or the overall proposal tonight? Anything else?
All right. There is a motion available or happy to entertain any further questions council has.
Will it actually be approving the resolution of the award?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, a resolution available.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 3252404, the 2024 street pavement maintenance project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and motion carries. All right. Our next item this evening, consideration of resolution 3252401, which is the 2025, 2026 airport, airport lease rate adjustments. And Christina, I believe you're walking us through this.
Yep. Mayor and council, we're here as has been customary since 2016. Every other year, the city looks at raising the lease rates out at the airport on the ground leases. For the last couple of years, the city has used the last 12 months of the CPIU for Minneapolis, St. Paul. Prior to that, there had been some discussions about going back to 2011. We did have some conversation and public comment about this at the airport commission and folks had thought that the way we, or a person at the, at that meeting thought that the way the city had been doing it for the last two years was not consistent with their lease language. I did pull that lease language. And as you'll see in your packet, it basically just says that it needs to be tied to the CPIU for Minneapolis, St. Paul and be reasonable when you decide to adjust those rates. And so what I had presented to the airport commission was consistent with what the city had done in 2020 and 2022, which was to look at the CPIU as of January for the previous 12 months and increase the rates that way. That would lead to an increase of 2.6%. And the airport commission did, is recommending that you follow that same procedure and increase the rates 2.6%. Since there was some conversation, I, and after I dug into the history, there are some options in your packet. The resolution is drafted to be consistent with the recommendation from the airport commission for the 2.6% increase. That's option one. The, another option would be to amend the rates to adjust for the CPIU for the last 24 months, since it had actually been two years since we had increased it. That was a conversation some of us had that perhaps that would be more accurate rather than skipping that year in the middle. And then the third option would, would be to go back to 2008 because that was the last time, there was a gap between 2008 and 2016 when the rates were not increased at all. So. That's what I have before you. Again, the recommendation from staff and the airport commission is to increase the rates by 2.6% for the next two years. Now I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Christina. Council, what questions may we have?
No, I was there.
Any questions, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I guess I just found it really confusing that we would have a 24 month window, but only look back 12 months. It just seems absurd. I guess I'd just be curious, this, these lease agreement revenue, does that go into the airport commission fund then to help pay for improvements that are happening out there?
It does, yep.
It does. What, what is that? I haven't done the math on this. I mean, we've gone through this, but what is that?
So if you went the last 24 months instead of the last 12 months, it's a 7.79% increase versus the 2.6. Back in 2022, I think it was a 7.2 or 7 point something increase. I don't, you know, I wasn't here. Some of you might have known, you know, but, but in 2020 and in 2022, they only looked back the last 12 months.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't make sense in my mind. I mean, I wish that was the case for me and my landlord, but I just, you know, just because it's been precedent for the last couple of times, I don't know that we need to keep doing bad math just because we've done it the last two rounds. But it's just one person's opinion.
I guess, so, so the adjustment requires every two years we do it. So the, so what's clear in the language is every two years we do an adjustment. And to be clear, the adjustment gets made every single year. So it's not like we're only adjusting, so there is a.
Nope, it only gets adjusted every two years.
Sorry.
Every other year.
So it's.
Every other year, yep.
Getting adjusted every other year. And the question is whether or not we should be using a 12 month window or a 24 month window? And the, is the, the lease language is unclear as to what that timeline is?
Right. The lease language just says that you have to set reasonable rates. And so you get to decide what's reasonable.
And the difference of 2% or 7% just happens to be the nature of what the CPI did and conceivable. So then you did do the math of what the, what it would be for in totality, right? That's.
Well, it's in our packet.
Yep. Those are the options in your packet. The, the two, A is that if you were to look back 24 months.
You know, I mean, having done some guesstimation in terms of, you know, the size of these buildings, I mean, the, the impact isn't, the absolute dollars isn't that significant. I just think that it's not great policy, what we've been operating under, but.
Part of it's been based on the fact that the airport doesn't offer all the amenities that other airports offer. Like weather reporting station, instrument approach procedures, that kind of thing, maintenance, that, that sort of thing. So there's some reasonable ways of looking at which, what's offered and how we can stay competitive with other airports, you know? So I'm not opposed to either one of them, to be honest with you. But I just wanted, so we keep it in that realm where, where it needs to be, you know?
Well, you know that, I mean, we've done a lot of improvements out there with the runway and expanding it and so forth. I mean, are those some things you just mentioned, are those things that would be on the short list if?
There, I don't see the instrument approach procedure ever coming to our airport because we're not federally funded there. And so that, that was explained by MINDOT where they, you'd have to have, actually have a private company set it up and there's an annual maintenance fee that goes with that. And in the proximity of two airports where you already have those procedures, it really doesn't pay here. It really doesn't. And the other issue, you know, we've, we've been asking for money for an AWAS, Automated Weather Observation, and it's in the CIP, but it's years down the road right now. So what we looked at earlier when this hall was getting going was, you know, what the rates were at, say, I know, or Osceola or Rush City and that kind of thing, and try to find something that was in amongst those numbers, you know, even though we don't have the amenities that they do. So.
How do these square, or price per square foot compare with those airports you just mentioned?
I don't have that comparison right in front of me, you know? So, but we're, we're right up there with them, so.
Isn't the, isn't the point though, that it just so happens to be that at this point in time, the difference is one is lower than the other? At any other point in time, depending on what's happening with the CPI, it might be, the two-year look back might be larger or might be smaller than the, the one year period. And so I guess, I guess I'm more concerned about having a consistent number that we're consistently using and that it is in, a number independent of something that we are, even though council's asked to approve it, that it's, it's something that is different than what we're using. It's tied to something external to the city. And so I don't really have a preference on whether we're using a three-year look back or a two-year look back or a one-year look back. It's more of that it's a consistent number that's independent of the city.
I would agree.
That, and again, the nature of what number's bigger is going to be a fluctuation over time. That's, it's going to just change as the CPI does change. Have we ever used the 24 month period?
We've never used the 24 month. I think back in 2018, you went back to 2011, maybe to 2018? Like there was a longer.
Was there like a catch up? There was like a one-time adjustment that was, like for many years, there was no adjustment, right?
But yeah. I think there was a longer adjustment because like I said, there was a number of years where there were no rate increases from, I think it was 2008 to 2016, there were no rate increases. So then shortly thereafter, they did a bigger one. And then since, for the last two times, it's just been the 12 month look back.
Right. I, I appreciate council, the logic of council member Erickson's question and I, it's, it's logical. I, I just don't know if I, what I want us to use is something that is consistent. And in this topic of airport leases that we have spent a lot of time on and has been an area of concern, I am concerned with us just having a different interpretation. Also, in a year where the other number is substantially higher, so I, I would default this year to the lower number that is our consistent number. If there is, if there is consensus down the road between airport, you know, leaseholders and the airport commission that we should change and move to a 24 month, I'm okay with that. I just, I'm hesitant to do that this year in a year when the other number is substantially higher. I think that's, I think it's challenging when what we've been looking for is something that's independent of the city and consistent.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, there has to be some, some set rules so everybody's on, on the same page with it. You know what I mean? So.
We've, you know, we've struggled and we've tried to, you know, there's, we've, you know, tried to keep it something that is outside of what's happening with budget, what's happening with levy.
So being, being new to this, first, first year on this, I've not been privy to many of these conversations. So it's interesting that the commission didn't come forward to us with some comps as to what other airports are, are getting per square foot. I mean, this is, this is a hell of a deal at wherever the rate is. And so it'd be nice to know going forward where we compare with other airports. It's, it's, it seems like it's pretty, pretty cheap land.
What, I mean, so can, to, to that question, can you give us, just, can you just walk us through the, the provisions of what we're, what we're allowed to? So council member Roberts' point, do we have an option to make a substantially different adjustment than what is, other than what's in the CPI? Or is our lease language so tied to that CPI?
The, the lease language is tied to CPI, but the flexibility that I see is how you use CPI, like over the timeframe. Right? So you have to use CPI. You can't just say this is what other, other airports have, right? It has to be somehow linked to CPI. It says that, some reasonable rate linked to CPIU. We, we also think long-term, these leases need to get rewritten so you don't have this problem and the, there's an automatic escalator in there, right? So this is kind of an interesting challenge, I think, that you have, have before you and something that we've recognized as, as it gets presented to us, we would like to change and make it better.
The lease rates that I was referring to was back in 2008 when we're looking at what the lease rates were going to be when we started opening up to build hangars there. And, and then the part of that issue is that the state of Minnesota has pretty much paid for that piece of land. And they paid for the infrastructure, they paid for the, you know, 80% of the sewer and water and all, all the amenities that went in there. Each hangar owner then put in extra money when they bought a permit. So there was really zero cost to the city of Forest Lake.
There's 20%. There's actually 20% cost.
Yeah, except that all got paid for by the owners. It was, and on top of the, the building permits that we paid, there was a $5,000 fee that went with it.
So we're using this index based on a, on a price that was established back in 2008? And that's what is triggering it?
Well.
That seems.
Not, not necessarily. It's, it's.
So again, the CPIU is, is one of the, is the variable that you have to use and how you use it to come to a reasonable rate is up to you.
But it's an increase.
In the, in, in most of those older contracts from, from long ago, I can't remember, there might have been a more recent one that just said that you get to adjust it every two years. But yes, the CPIU, but not necessarily CPIU from 2008 either. It just says you use the CPIU and come up with a reasonable rate.
So one of the things, one of the topics that makes this question challenging is that we're talking about long-term leases. So these leases have a period of, is it 20 to 30 years?
25 years.
20, and they're all, they're all 25 years. And so for us to, so there's an opportunity for us potentially to tie ourselves to a different structure. But as I understand it, we need to be at, like all of those existing leases are tied to that current rate, that it would have to be new leases only? Is that, Amanda's going to correct something that I said. Jump in, please.
Just a quick point of order. So my understanding is that the leases are not all identical language.
They are not.
So we have a variation in the lease language. The, one of the leases that I looked at, it, it said you're allowed to do a reasonable rate and then it uses the CPI as an example of what it would consider to be a reasonable rate. So in, for example, in that particular lease, we could make an argument that we don't have to follow the CPI. I'm not saying that because frankly, as Christina alluded to, it's just really bad lease language. We need a, a set escalator, 4%, 5%, whatever the number is. I mean, that's what you do in all other land leases that we would have. The tricky part is these are super long.
They are.
And, and so to try to fix them is just a really long game. In absent, absence of the ability to fix them, you know, holistically on a lease platform, I think the alternative would be as a council to sort, to pass some sort of a, a resolution or a policy that we can document that says this is what we're going to do moving forward. We have deemed this to be the reasonable rate, the end, and, and then use that, you know, temporarily until we're able to correct the leases. So that's probably your best fix is to do that.
Correcting those leases actually means renegotiating and getting agreement from all of those current leaseholders. Is that?
Yes.
That is not something that we're just admitted? There's no vehicle in the lease language that allows us to make those changes because again, we're locked into very long-term leases.
Right. Except for the, the clause that says you get to pick a reasonable rate.
Okay.
So as long as we pick a reasonable rate, they don't have the ability, I mean, they don't really have the ability to, to dispute that. And the CPI has, the way that, that it's written, it's not clear if the CPI is taking it from one year, taking it from 24 months, taking it all the way back to 2008. If you look at the percentages that the CPI would generate, it's anywhere from 2% to 41%, depending upon how you read these, the CPI. So it goes back to pick a reasonable rate. And even if we just say from now on, we're raising it 4% a year at the end, it's still going to fall in line with the CPI because the leases don't give us a guideline for how to actually apply the CPI. Does that, does that make sense? So from a legal perspective, my advice is just pick a number and let's just make a policy that says moving forward, this is the number, we're done. And then that sort of solves this, every bi, biannual issue.
I guess I, I think it'd be good to have that on a workshop here sometime in the near future, you know, relatively near future, wherever.
When you say that though, workshop for future leases, new leases coming in, right? So future conversation.
Well, if I understood Amanda correctly, I mean, certainly new leases, but even with the existing leases, if we as a body said, okay, our reasonable rate is 4% or whatever the number is, and here's the policy that proclaims that, did I understand you correctly?
Yeah. Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Erickson, yes. It would be that we've set the policy, you know, I would definitely do the sort of the explaining and the whereas's and all of that around how we got to this number and why we believe it's reasonable and how it ties to the CPI or averages to CPI or whatever. And then that's, yeah, that would be how we paper that.
To follow that for the action tonight, do you feel that there is a number? I mean, so are you suggesting we table and, and do that work before we arrive at a number? Or are?
I could go either way for, you know, for this year. I just, when I read through that, I just had a lot of question marks going off like, you know, so we're, and whether it's a 2% number or 5% number, it's fascinating that we, we only look at it every two years and we use that last 12 months as the next two years rental, or, or lease agreement. So I was just.
Fair.
Bringing up the conversation.
Yeah, I think it does pose issues with consistency and I like the idea of resolution or policy. Because I think regardless of what we pick here tonight, if we don't do a resolution or a policy, this question is just bound to come up.
It will.
Four years from now, 10 years from now.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. It'll come up again. So I think if we can have that conversation and try to solve that issue. And then with that, with consistency, I'd be more inclined to do the 2.6% even though similar to you, council member Erickson, seeing all these options, I'm like, realistically, the best option would be the most expensive. the best option would be the most expensive for everyone, but that's harsh, that's intense, that's, let's just, let's find a better option to make it consistent. So I do like the 2.6% for this year and then moving forward, looking at a policy or a resolution, whichever is best.
I'm fine either way. I think last fall, I talked about maybe we need some kind of a, this airport situation, not just this, Hangar 97, potentially people living out there. We need to workshop it and get things straightened out out there. This is just one of, another issue that the airport is, has and it just, need to have a resolution to this.
Some of those things are being addressed and taken care of. So the other thing you want to keep in mind when you talked about your landlord, whatever rate they use for figuring your lease, that includes the building, taxes, whatever, we're talking about a piece of land that a building is sitting on that pays separately on taxes. So it's, we're talking about a piece of land that, that's been basically accounted for through MINDOT and RINOTICS. So we need to have that discussion. I'll be happy to do that. So.
So I appreciate the questions that were brought up tonight and the fresh set of eyes on, gosh, why are we using this math and does this math make sense? I think it's a great, I think we should support also us workshopping that. Tonight, though, for consistency purposes, and this has been a really challenging topic for council over the years, I am going to rely on consistency of what we've done and it happens to be that that is also the lower number. So I think for leaseholders, that is a fair number for this year. And so I would move that council approve resolution 3252401. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item 7D, which is the fire staffing with the SAFER grant. And Chief Newman?
Mayor members of the council, up for consideration is the creation of two new full-time firefighting positions. To give you a better understanding of our ask, I'd like to give you a little bit of history on the Fire Department staffing model. So when I joined the Fire Department in 1991, we're made up of 32 paid-on-call firefighters and a paid-on-call fire chief. We're governed by the Joint Fire Board, which was made up by Forest Lake Township, Wyoming Township, the City of Columbus, and Forest Lake. At that time, we responded to about 250 calls a year. In 2002, Forest Lake hired its, or created the first full-time chief's position. In 2010, they created a full-time fire inspection position. In 2024, the city kind of changed its organization and the building department was moved under the Fire Department. At that time, we created two new positions that were referred to as dual-role employees, where their main job was building department and their priority was Fire Department Response. That provided response Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And they would typically do their job in building and when the pager went off, if they could leave, then they responded to fire calls. In 2015, we ended the fire inspection program. And over the last decade, from 2014 to last year, our fire responses increased 56% from 310 calls to 508 calls, and our highest in 2020 was 550 calls. So last Thursday, we brought up in front of the Joint Fire Board for discussion, these two new positions. After a lengthy discussion, the Joint Fire Board made a motion to, or a recommendation to bring forth to the council, one of those two positions. So the staff report that you have in front of you is for two positions. That's been revised down to one full-time firefighting captain. That person would work Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and they would be under the Fire Department. Some of the reasons that we're looking at adding this position would be to improve training consistency. Currently, our training program is run between myself and one of the other paid-on-call firefighters. It would also enhance leadership in the fire ground because we have paid-on-call staff. At any time, we do not know who's showing up. The pager goes off, and if you're available, you show up. Improve response time by having somebody that's here at the station that does not have to drive from either their job or their home. And then assist in administrative tasks, public outreach, fire prevention, issuing burn permits, repair and maintenance, and code enforcement issues, all things that currently fall underneath the fire chief. Current other staffing, I have the building department that reports to the fire chief, which is four employees, building maintenance, which is two employees, 31 paid-on-call firefighters, and as the first of the year, I'm now the city's emergency manager. So this position is being brought up as administrative support for the Fire Department as well. With that, the revision, the ask here is for $145,238. That includes wages and benefits. And since this Forest Lake is under a joint powers agreement between the City of Columbus and the City of Forest Lake, Forest Lake's portion of that would be $116,190 and Columbus' portion would be $29,048. So we plan on writing a grant for a portion of this funding. It's called the SAFERS Grant, the SAFER Grant, which helps Fire Department fund the creation of new positions. It's a three-year grant. This grant, if we're successfully awarded, would cover the expense for fiscal year '25, '26, and '27 and pay all wage and benefits for that position. So what the ask for tonight is the creation of one full-time position within the Fire Department, starting in 2025. Commit to funding these firefighter positions beginning in 2028. And additionally, authorizing the submission of the SAFER Grant to fund those positions for the first three years. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, if I may just add in a little bit of additional context that came up during the Joint Fire Board. Councilmember Erickson joined in as well. If I miss anything, you know, I think there was a recognition that this dual position is probably not something that any one of us would design from scratch, that it's a very unique situation, that you would have building staff in the building that are also firefighters. And so as Chief says, their primary role within the city day-to-day is building, but when there is a fire, that is their top priority and they are providing that response. And the impact of that is substantial of, prior to us having, and the reason we went to that model was we were having challenge with having enough daytime response for our paid-on-call department. And again, while nobody would maybe start with that model today, we have it in place and we have two people that are actively serving in that role and we are getting the benefit of that first responder response for a building, for a building department. And so again, while you may not start from a blank sheet of paper with that in mind, but since it's there and working, there was a lot of hesitancy to move away from that model because of the potential impact to the overall paid-on-call model that we have with our Fire Department. And Chief has done an excellent job over the years of helping to preserve that model. And I think there's a lot of motivation for us, for many reasons, financial being top, to hang on to that model as long as we can. And Chief has a strategy that keeps us able to keep that model for the foreseeable future. This isn't a one or two years from now, we may have to change models, which is a multimillion-dollar decision for the city. There is a long-term commitment to that model and this is a critical piece right now that for us to step away from that and to make those full-time positions was just started this cascading effect that personally I felt really moved us away from the paid-on-call model and kind of accelerated us having some sort of full-time staffing. And so again, it's unique. I appreciate that from a staffing position of those who have to kind of pick things up once, you know, beepers go off and staff start disappearing from the window, there is an impact to that. But if we are able to keep that in place, at least through attrition, we should, I think there was a lot of motivation on the Joint Fire Board to try to preserve that as long as possible, which then kind of brought us back to this conversation of if we're bringing on full-time staff, yes, there's a SAFER Grant that covers that for a number of years, but then we're on, then we are on the hook for that staff. And there was some concern that having three full-time fire chief plus two additional staff was just too much too soon. And there was a broader preference and recognition that yes, Chief has too much on his plate, yes, there is a need for some additional staffing, but let's bring on just one position instead of two and really recommit to this dual role as long as it's working. And again, all indications seem to be that it's working and so let's not step away from that. So I just wanted to kind of give that context of a really good conversation we had at the Joint Fire Board. I don't know, Member Erickson.
Yeah, no, it's a great summary and, you know, just some of the numbers that we're, we think about this paid-on-call model that we have. And Al's done a great job of leading that side of the door, as he calls it, the responders. I mean, that's, over a 10-year period, that's a $30 million savings for the city. I mean, that's real money. And so to be able to, you know, maintain that for as long as possible, I think we also need to recognize that we need to have more support and a plan so that if Al, you know, doesn't make it back from a fishing trip, you know, there's not, the wheels aren't going to fall off. And so that's where we started looking at this, you know, asking Al, would you come to a budget meeting and say, hey, I need two new full-time firefighters? It's like, well, no. So that's kind of part of what brought us down to this one with the recognition that, you know, we don't want to handcuff future councils to a quarter-million-dollar decision. And so that's where I have every confidence that you're going to get the SAFER Grant if, assuming this body wants to support it, which would, you know, really enable us to get started, kick-started on that, on that plan that you've laid out without really having any impact to the budget in the, you know, next handful of years. But it is making a commitment to the future for sure.
Questions from council? Feedback?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's positive. It's exciting to see the growth and where there are difficulties, being able to voice those difficulties and the concerns and then coming to a consensus that is beneficial for the future. So I'm supportive of this.
I think it's an inevitable situation that we're going to be going more and more in that direction.
Yeah.
And this at least will tell us how it's going to work with the SAFER Grant and gives us an opportunity to get our feet wet on it and see if it's a fit. It's going to end up being a fit no matter what we do. So I would agree.
So if we don't receive this grant, then I would assume staff would come back for one of these positions regardless at some point?
Yes.
And how does that play into if, more of a longer term, where we try to, I think, I think staff has talked about trying to pull the building away from fire and a better model because we're anomaly here, that just doesn't happen very often? How would that play into it? Still need that additional person if that were the case?
Well, I think that, you know, the dual response firefighters or dual-role firefighters, currently we have a firefighter engineer in one of those positions. So that with, if that goes away eventually, that will be something to be addressed because the firefighter engineer, he's basically the one that's in charge of operating the fire apparatus. And so not knowing if you're going to have an engineer show up or not, it'd be nice to have that guarantee that that's going to happen. But beyond that, we're going to stick with the paid-on-call, paid-on-call model. That's worked really well for us when it hasn't worked in communities all around us. Up until just a few months ago, we were fully staffed and we're down one, a firefighter that retired after 23 years. But since 2014, we've hired 23 firefighters and we still have 19 of them on board after 10 years. So our retention and recruitment has been very good with the Fire Department and that model has suited our city well. And I just, I don't see that that's going to end anytime soon. So this ask for one full-time firefighter is not only for response, but a big part of that is for the administration help and succession planning, which at this point we just don't have in place.
I, one of the considerations for me in moving from two to one was just recognizing that if we do not get that SAFER Grant, that this position does become part of that budget conversation, recognition that sometimes we've seen positions take a couple of years to get funded and we may need that on this position, to be frank, if that SAFER Grant isn't received. And so having that commitment loom out there to have two positions, I just felt like was too aggressive considering just where we've been with staff funding and some, again, we've needed multiple cycles sometimes. And so to get two through and to have that committed, I felt like it was just a little too top-heavy. It's lovely to have the SAFER Grant and have it be funded for a couple of years. It's just what that commitment is afterwards I was concerned with.
And I appreciate the Fire Board looking, you know, as much as I'm sure two are needed to back that down a little bit, I appreciate the time on that and the thought.
Any other questions or points of conversation? And again, just to clarify for process, Chief, if we do not receive that SAFER Grant, then council will have an opportunity to decide what's next with that position, I would assume, as part of the budget process or once that SAFER Grant becomes known, is that the plan?
Yes, it'll be added to the staffing plan for 2025. And then notification of successful awards start in August and end on the last day of September. So we do know before the budget cycle ends.
Very good. Perfect. Any other questions? Happy to entertain a motion if anyone's ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the submittal of the SAFER Grant for one new firefighter position with city budget impacts starting in 2028.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And motion carries. Our next item, consideration of the city administrator profile, and I believe we have Bart joining us.
Yes, we do.
May Rain. We also need a motion for a submittal to the SAFER Grant.
Did we just?
Oh, I thought that was part of our motion.
That was part of, I.
I missed that then.
Was that part of your motion?
Read the motion from the packet with the, just changing it from two to one, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I think we, next we have Bart participating remotely for the city administrator profile.
Yep, Bart, if you can, just go ahead and speak.
Sounds good. The ultimate question in a virtual setting, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. You sound great.
Fantastic. Yep. Well, thank you very much, Mayor Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to join you remotely tonight, virtually, and being able to stay close to home, take care of a few things as well. So thank you for that. I really do appreciate that. Before tonight is the profile for the city administrator position. What we really ultimately tried to do with this document is listen to you, get and put together a document that really encapsulates, quite frankly, the community, kind of going from like bigger picture down to the smaller picture, right? The community, the organization itself, and then ultimately down to what you all want to see in the next city administrator. And we hope that we were able to do that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come up there and talk to many of you, many of the staff, to gather a lot of that background information to put the profile together. So ultimately tonight, I'm here to just gather your feedback, answer any questions you might have on that, and hopefully have you approve the profile and approve the posting. And we can even get that posted likely as soon as tomorrow if, if there aren't, you know, significant changes and things like that to the profile. So with that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, council member, or I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, council members, I apologize. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Bart. Council, the profile is in our packets. Any questions that you may have for Bart or staff tonight?
Bart, I, so I had an opportunity to review the profile. I see the recommended salary range that is listed on the profile, and I understand how that links back to our pay grade. You know, with the profile and with this salary range, are you, is it your recommendation that this is our best, best proposal to attract the, you know, the greatest number of qualified candidates? I think that's my goal as I look at what we're looking to get out of this document.
Sure. Mayor, that's a great question. I, is this the best? You know, as a consultant, we'll always probably say as a general rule, the higher the posted salary range, the higher number of applicants that you will receive. That being said, there is a balance there, right? And we try to strike that balance. I know we provided some information on some comparisons, things like that. And I know Attorney Johnson has also provided some information to you in regards to some comparison on salaries and things like that. So to ultimately answer your question, I guess, I don't think you're out of line and would actually, yes, receive some quality candidates with this salary range.
Thank you. Council, I had an opportunity to review. I'm comfortable with the profile as, as listed. I think Bart's captured our needs. This is, you know, the beginning stage of the recruitment process. Certainly, you know, everything becomes negotiable as we think about actually extending offers and what salaries may land, but I think this is a good place to start.
I think so, too.
I'm happy to support it unless anyone has any thoughts.
Because I don't have anything to compare it against, having never seen these before, but I just wonder if it would make sense to highlight our business community a little bit, and we have some major employers in the area as well as, you know, obviously very, several smaller mid-sized businesses. And we call out strong future growth on the first page, but I don't know if it really addresses what some of that anticipated growth might look like so that those applicants might be, you kind of really get a sense of what that opportunity really is to be a part of. You know, it's called out here, you know, 40% growth in the next, next number of years. I mean, that's a pretty awesome opportunity to be a part of and to guide. Because one, you know, one of the things I want to see the city continue to grow in is being a great partner in the community, to the school district with athletic facilities, and also our business community and developers. So that would be the one thing I feel like might be missing a little bit.
I wonder if a place to add that would be, and maybe it's in here. I don't, we, you know, we highlight regional activities, we highlight healthcare. Well, it's somewhat here, but maybe to your point, Councilmembers, we'd call it out further. We do highlight that we are on, and I'm on page, I'm on page two, which is the first page of text. We do highlight that we're a strong retail center. Maybe that could, you know, welcoming downtown, maybe that could be expanded of, I've, we've seen this be described in other, in other documents, maybe I'm thinking of the downtown plan, where we talk about a regional hub, and it's that regional nature that maybe we are missing that makes us different than Hilo-Columbus. I mean, there's a size element, but there's also a, there is a regional hub that happens. And because of that, we are a center of many activities. Maybe adding that would, is that?
Yeah, yeah, I've nothing to compare it. So maybe this is kind of the general highlighted, you know, highlighted topics in most of these that the applicants are going to be looking for, but it just, you know, felt like it wasn't really highlighted like some of these other healthcare, recreation, education.
Fair.
Yeah, I don't think any of us have anything to compare it really, because it's been five years since we did this before, so a lot of things change along the way and, but I think you spelled it up pretty well.
I, one thing I want to point out is underneath where it says the organization, and it lists the different boards, it says Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission. If we could get that changed to Parks and Recreation Commission. And then besides that, I think it's, I think it's comprehensive. There's a lot that goes into it, but I think, I think it does a good job.
I would agree with Councilmember Erickson. I think calling that out, that's important, you know, to have that partnership and I think it needs to be at least mentioned somewhere in there to a little bit more degree.
Are you, I'm hesitant on delaying getting this posted because this, getting this approved, I'm going to stop because Amanda's signaling at me. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Your Honor, council. Could we, just a thought, to be able to continue to move this ahead, would you be okay approving with minor modification as approved by the city attorney? And then I hear what you're saying about adding a section for businesses or the all-regional hub, and then obviously the modification to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So if we were able to make that modification and then submit it out, would you need to see it again, or would you be okay knowing that we could incorporate what you're asking for and move forward?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Bart, are you good with that?
Yes, yes, that makes a lot of sense. If you're comfortable with that, we can definitely work on adding, again, more robust language around the business community and that partnership with them. And then, thank you, Councilmember Valenta, for pointing out that, the change on the commission as well. We can make that change.
Just one minor little, one minor little nitpick. Netpick, I did notice that the charter school is referenced as being a private charter school, happens to be a public charter school. So we're making some changes, there's just a minor, minor adjustment there. But I, I would advocate that we approve this this evening to, if you see the timeline, I think the plan would be for this to be published, that our posting would become live within the next couple of days because this does start the planned, I believe it's about four weeks of application timeframe, and I just want us to get this out on the street and start getting those applicants in. And so I appreciate Amanda's suggestion that we give her authority to make that, make those final approvals. I'm seeing some heads nod. Any other points of feedback? All right. I would move that council approve the city administrator profile with edits to be approved by our city attorney as discussed this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. Thank you for being here tonight, Bart.
Thank you very much, mayor, council members. I really appreciate it. We'll move forward with this.
Very good. All right, we are going to, that ends our planned action agenda for this evening, and we are going to move into a discussion topic. And that is intended to be a more informal working session of topic, working session of council. Anything that we talk about in that workshop session that requires official action will come back before council. And so let's move into that. Ryan, I believe you have a memo prepared for the downtown stormwater BMP changes. And we have Tim here as well from Bolton Mank.
In the clerk folder.
Mayor, city council, in your packet for discussion, there is a memo prepared, staff reports. I don't know if you guys have seen that previously, but then also a presentation by Tim Olson we'll go through first.
Thank you.
I should be able to get it on here.
Sure.
Is that it?
Yes. Yes. Okay. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Tim Olson with Bolton Mank, I'm a water resources engineer. Tonight we'll be talking about some options we prepared for modifications to the downtown BMP project. Go to the next slide. We'll discuss some basin reconfigure, reconfiguration options tonight, mostly related to slope and depth. I'll prepare, or I'll explain some options for revegetation, too, towards the end. As we go through each basin, we can certainly stop and talk about each one of those, or if you'd like to save questions to the end, we can also do that. I'll also summarize the treatment volumes and the cost comparisons with these different options and then talk about some next steps. Next slide, please. I met with, with most of the residents. Unfortunately, there were a few that weren't able to make it out. I talked to Mr. Dahlbeck tonight, too, hopefully, and, and an attempt to meet with him this week yet. I know that there's a lot of snow out there right now, so maybe even after that, the snow has melted. But between March 13th and March 22nd, we met with most of the residents, walked through the sites and discussed the options. Explained a little bit further on some of the issues that we saw with construction and then the modifications that are being proposed this evening. Also heard a lot of their feedback on issues with mowing and so on. Next slide, please. I know there's been a lot of conversation over slopes and really what those mean. And so we have examples of steep slopes at two to one, which is a two-foot horizontal to one-foot vertical drop, all the way to four to one and flatter. So that's a four-foot horizontal distance with a one-foot vertical drop. So I wanted to at least show what some of those slopes look like so we can go out and see those directly in the field. Basin seven is on the far north end, north of 233rd. Those are some of the steeper slopes on the site as constructed at two to one. Basin three, more towards the south end of the project. We have four to one slopes on the roadway side and three to one slopes on the resident side, and then some examples of four to one slopes here with basin two. We'll go through each one of these locations again, but just as a reminder to, you know, as to what those slopes look like. Two to one, obviously very challenging to mow. Three to one, four to one, getting progressively easier.
Tim, was that two to one, was that ever as designed?
No.
Okay.
So in, in exploring these reconfiguration options, through lots of conversation over the past few months, we know that there, there are basin bottom elevation issues as constructed. Numerous basin, many of the basins were constructed too low. We also have some contamination issues with upstream sediment from rainfall that happened during construction and unprotected discharge that can cause clay material to move over the tops of those filters and restrict drainage. So we know we have a few basins that are, that are experiencing that. As we go through these options, then, you know, option one would be to correct to the original design. Those included three to one slopes in most cases. The, the pros here would be that, you know, this provides the most offset treatment volume for downtown economic development. However, there, you know, those, those resident concerns for mowing would remain. Option two would be to create, to correct those basins for some easier maintenance. And in this particular case, we'd be adjusting all basins to a four to one slope and then, of course, fixing those bottom elevation issues. This would accommodate, you know, easier maintenance for the residents, most certainly, but it, there's some reduction in that offset treatment volume for downtown redevelopment. And then finally, option three would be to restore to the pre-construction condition, which, you know, is, is the original ditch configuration for the residents, but would essentially eliminate all of that offset treatment volume for economic development downtown. Okay, so I'm going to go through each basin now, and we'll talk a little bit about some of our initial design assumptions, sort of what happened in the field, and then some corrective actions. These are going to focus on option two because that is, that would be the most, you know, impact from a construction perspective. And option three, to restore basins to the original, would just, you know, be essentially to, to restore those ditches. So basin one, it does have the largest contributing drainage area. It's about 28% of the total treatment volume on the project. The depth of that basin really is connected to the existing storm sewer that comes off of Hayward. That storm sewer is what provides the storm water into the treatment feature. And the reason that that basin is as deep as it is is to daylight that existing storm sewer pipe. The side slopes were constructed too steep. We know that during construction, there was lots of rain at the time that that basin was wide open, so we'd want to check for potential tile clogging through some exploration during construction. And as that bottom elevation comes up to what was originally designed or potentially higher, if need be, we could add a second tile, a second drain tile in there to help with more effective drainage. These drawings, I admittedly are, are a bit technical, but what we'd be looking at here for, for one option for basin one would be to extend the exist, the storm sewer pipe further to reduce the size of that feature. We'd shallow up the slopes and raise the elevation to what was originally designed and then add that second tile. And you can see here that to correct it to the original design versus option two, we'd lose a little over 50% of the total volume in that basin. Another option here for, for, for this basin would be to replace the tile completely. That would mean that we'd fill in the entire basin, and that could apply to this feature and others, and we can talk about that a little more here, too, as we go. But you can see that with the correction in slope and the correction in elevation as constructed, we'd lose about 58% of that, of that volume. Just a bit of a different view here. You can see the difference between what was constructed in the brown dash line versus what would be proposed in the green. I tried to show these cross-sections in some of the more extreme conditions, so you can see that on the number two side, there's a shelf that was constructed that really wasn't there as designed. We see water standing in the bottom of the feature here, too, which may be indicative of some soil contamination or clogged drain tile. So raising that bottom elevation up as high as we can and still daylight the, the storm sewer pipe off of Hayward and then perform those, those slope corrective actions. Okay. So basin two was originally intended to be a water quality basin. However, given its depth and grade, we just really couldn't quite fit a tile in there and still maintain enough sand cover over the top of the pipe. So this was essentially converted to more of a ditch section. We did widen that ditch. The slopes were adjusted in the field to be four to one slopes, and it really provides some additional rate control or flood storage, if you will, in the ditch, some additional surface filtration and so on. We're not really proposing any change here to this basin. It, it does mimic the existing ditch pretty closely, and it doesn't have any additional drain tile. That's all sodded or seeded currently. Basin three, as we continue to move north around the corner here on North Shore Trail, at the north end of that feature, near the outlet or the overflow point, we're at about a one-foot depth, and then towards the south end, more like two and a half feet. You know, these slopes were constructed very close to three to one. We know we've got a pretty, a steeper slope on the north end, so either correcting those back to a three to one or a four to one, certainly an option. We do believe this basin was contaminated. It does draw down much slower than the remaining basins. The, the feature on basin number one, you know, we had a lot of rain during that time, so we do believe that clay was moved downstream during construction and contaminated the surface. So we'd be looking at, you know, pulling back the blanket that's there, removing the clay, and then restoring that basin with new, new seed. Moving on to basin four, at the outlet, this is, this basin slightly less than half a foot deep at the basin. On average, we're at a one and a half to two-foot depth relative to. On average, we're at a one and a half to two-foot depth relative to the resident's slope and the roadway slope. This basin is slow to drain as well. In this image, you can barely see it, but in the foreground, there's some standing water. So it's a, it'd be a matter of pulling that blanket back again, restoring the surface, correcting any elevation issues here. But we do, as you see, get about 1,000 cubic feet of volume here. Basins two, three, and four were largely constructed per plan. I know that on the north edge of basin four, there's some additional slope issue there, too, that can be corrected. It's likely challenging to mow in that corner. So just some general fill and reshaping in there. Basin five was a challenge, most certainly. There was a gas service that had to be rerouted during construction. There was also a sanitary sewer service that was discovered that we couldn't move. And so that, the grading was adjusted in the field, and it was also insulated at the time. This is one of the larger features. It's really now three cells instead of the original two because of that sanitary sewer service. And we know we have significant, especially elevation issues here, which are really, you know, contributing to the slope issues. So here's that three basin configuration. The south basin would be on the right-hand side, and just remember that for the next slide here. As we move north or from right to left, the basins actually get deeper, and they shouldn't. They should all be the same elevation. The north basin has the most extreme. This is at Tom and the Charles property. We know that that north basin's like two and a half feet deeper than what was designed. So simply correcting that will certainly help with the slope issue that's there, too. I know that Tom has expressed some concerns with mowing there. The two south basins also have some depth issues as well as slope. But you can see here, too, from origin, from design to the corrected for easier maintenance, we're again losing about 50% of that volume.
Can I just clarify, is this the slide you intended to have up? I didn't have this slide. I was still on basin seven.
There's two more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I should pay attention up there, too. Yep, so now go to the next one, please. Okay. So here, this is, yeah, okay. So the south basin, again, was on the right-hand side. Do you maybe want to go back one slide, just so we can get our, get a frame of reference here again? The right-hand side of the screen is the south basin. So we'll start there and then move to the north or to the left. Thank you. And go to the next slide. Okay. The south basin, especially in the south end, it was constructed slightly low. It's not overwhelmingly low as compared to the north side of the feature, which we'll talk here in just a second. We do have some slope issues that are greater than three to one. Largely on the resident's side and on the roadway side, they were constructed to a three to one or closer to a four to one slope. So not many corrective issues there from a slope perspective. The middle basin, again, gets slightly deeper. On the roadway side, we are steeper than a three to one slope, so adjusting that and filling the bottom. And then finally, on the north side, we're nowhere, about two and a half feet low there. So adjusting those slopes, reshaping, and bringing those to a four to one slope for easier maintenance. Again, here a different view. This is the north basin near the Charles property. You can see the depth issues that we encountered after construction and what those adjustments would look like. So there, again, I'd be pulling back some topsoil, refilling with sand, potentially even adding a second tile if we want to at this point. This, these particular features are draining as intended, but making sure that we're scraping that back and fixing any contamination. All right. Moving on to basin six. This is the most extreme elevation. We're just south of 233rd now. There's the most extreme difference in elevation between the south and the north. After talking with the seerings, we understand that crossing the road to get to their lake access has become an issue. And so the option two reconfiguration would restore that. I'll show you that in just a second here. But we're only about .85 feet or so, just under a foot at the outlet structure, but closer to six feet of cut towards the south end of that feature. There was a phone line that was indicated before construction that we thought was not in conflict, but ended up being in conflict. That has been recently relocated. So that extreme-ish slope that you see out there by the phone pedestal will be corrected now that the phone line has been moved. And we know we have, again here, slopes that are steeper than three to one, which is making it challenging to mow. So here, you can see from the kind of the red contour lines, we would shift that slope to the north, create a flatter space for more visibility for the crossing. The bottom elevation is in pretty good shape here, so we'd lose about 20% of the volume with an option two correction. So here's a cross-section view. I tried to show at the most extreme points, that little shelving that you see near number two is related to the phone line. Again, that'll be corrected. But you can see that the basin bottom got pretty close here, but we know we have some side slope issues. Similarly, now we're looking at it more longitudinally across the feature here and what that adjustment would look like on the south end to create an easier access to get across the lake. Last but not least, basin number seven. This, at the north end of the feature, is three, was designed at three feet deep. It's closer to four because of some construction issues here. You know, of course, that always creates a steeper slope to get down to a deeper elevation. This does take some drainage off of 233rd. It's about 25% of the total treatment volume, so its depth really contributes to the volume. And we believe we've got some drawdown issues here, too. So one of the corrective actions would be to fill that basin up to its, either its design elevation or higher, and replace that sand and add another tile to help with drawdown. Similar view, we know that the slopes leading up to the basin, so from the culvert end, I don't know if you can see that on the graphic, but from the culvert end that comes off of 233rd all the way to the basin, is pretty flat slopes in there. And so the, being, we would do some minor grading to restore that and make sure that we have positive drainage. We talked to the resident, and there's some concerns with some standing water and wet soil in there. The correction here, we'd see a reduction in about 22% of the volume to bring that bottom elevation up. Again, similar to basin five, we see those extreme differences in what was designed versus what was actually constructed. And so restoring that basin bottom, adding sand and tile will help with drainage. Okay. That gets us through the proposed corrective actions. The vegetation that was chosen out there, you know, was sod on the residential side and then turf seed on the roadway side. And then we chose a native seed in the bottom of the basin. Those really help promote water quality and effective drainage with deep roots. And so it's a seed mix that we use quite frequently. It is a challenging environment for the seed to really germinate and to maintain. We've learned a lot even over the past six months on some additional studies about what the seed means in this environment. And so one alternative that we have been exploring is to use a fescue instead of a native seed. So here, it's still a native plant. It has lower mow requirements. They grow a little slower, but they also have deep roots, too. So we can have them function similar to the flowering plants, so the flowering seed that was chosen. However, easier to maintain. We know that these ditches are going to be, these features, excuse me, are going to be mowed. And so putting in something that's closer to a turf grass is certainly an option. We can also put in turf seed. I would not sod the bottoms of the feature. Those, the sod tends to have more clay in it than the topsoil mix that we want to use here. So to avoid the clogging with excess clay, we'd avoid sod, but could seed with a turf grass, too. Okay. So in summary, if we were to correct to the original design, the total volume would be about 15,000 cubic feet. When you do the math and you work through the watershed district standards, that equates to about two and a half acres of equivalent treated area. For option two, if we were to look at a corrective maintenance, a correct, correct the, what's out there now for easier maintenance, we'd have an equivalent of about 1.8 acres of treatment. And then, you know, of course, if we brought back to the original preconstruction condition, we would lose that treatment volume. However, I want to point out that, you know, some of these features could remain to provide at least some offset treatment volume. But as you can see with option number two, we'd get to about 1.8 acres of equivalent treatment. The costs that you see there are currently our engineers' estimated costs. We would want to, you know, solicit quotes for contractors and work with them through the details on what would actually be constructed here. So that's just a high-level engineer's estimate at this time. Okay. So if we talk about maintenance or about the maintenance and the treatment credits, you know, ultimately, that's the result of this project. If we use the original city, the original budget is defined by the city of $315,000. Back in March of 2023, about a year ago, we discussed an option for maintenance under a 10-year life cycle and approximately $1.25 per cubic foot volume per year. And that's, there's some math in there. But the overall, the total credit then for option one, because there's more volume for the same price, would be 235. Option two would be closer to 300. So that would be the credit cost sold back to the developer. Keep in mind that this does include the three additional water quality structures that would be built in the downtown area per the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District standards. We're estimating those at around $75,000 for all three. So that cost is also factored into here, too. Okay. So the recommendation here to best balance the resident maintenance, the city's maintenance, and providing some offset treatment volume for economic development would be option two. We can treat about 1.8 acres, as mentioned before, with that anticipated cost per credit of $300,000. If we look at a potential redevelopment scenario, we're calling this the gone property. In red, it's a total of about three acres. The area that's been identified as potential phase one is 1.1 acres. This does contain some public right-of-way. But that option two, available credit of 1.8 acres, would at least cover that phase one portion and then some of phase two. And again, that cost per credit is there. The, this property would drain to at least two of the water quality structures. That third one could be constructed at a later time. But at least those two are there and could be drained, too. All right, so next steps. If we can talk about some direction tonight on which way we'd like to go, that would be great. You know, then if we could set this up on kind of an every council meeting for the next few council meetings to approve plans and specs, authorize an ad for quotes, come back two weeks later for a possible award of a contract, and then start construction soon thereafter. We've talked to some contractors. We're hoping that a month timeline will work here. But then we'd begin construction immediately. So that'd be the, probably the best-case scenario in terms of construction, but at least one, one option here to present. With that, I'd like to open it up for any discussion or questions.
Thank you, Tim. Council, lots to digest. What's on your mind?
Let's start the numbers. So that credit cost of just shy of $300,000, that's paid by the developer. Is that intended to offset future costs of maintenance? Or does that actually offset cost to, I mean, kind of thinking it through, what, who's getting that money? And is that basically offsetting our cost of construction?
Correct.
Okay.
It's meant to incentivize development in some ways. That 10-year cost cycle does pay, then, for at least 10 years of maintenance. These become part of the city's municipal separate storm sewer system and require maintenance similar to other ponds that have been constructed around town.
You kept talking about drainage. And I mean, it sounds like if you go from basin one to basin seven, is the intent that it's draining south to north? Is that, is that the idea?
There are three outlets in total. So basins one, two, three, and four all drain to the same outlet. Basin five drains to an outlet, and then six and seven drain to an outlet.
And where do those outlets drain to?
Forest, into Forest Lake.
Into Forest Lake.
Yes.
So the intent is to still get that water into the lake?
That's correct. With the clay nature of the soil, nothing infiltrates. So all of the volume that goes into these features will go through the tile, through the storm sewer, and then into the lake. So there's really no reduction in volume here. All of that water still does make it to the lake.
So the idea is stuff settles up before it gets to the lake, isn't that pretty much?
Correct. Filtration, the plants absorb other pollutants. It's nutrient capture is the biggest issue in Forest Lake. So reducing phosphorus and nitrogen ideally will help control algal blooms and other harmful nutrient issues in Forest Lake.
The 1.8 acres, that includes the three water or whatever's going to happen downtown? So that's, that's not in addition. So the 1.8 isn't just out there. You need to incorporate those pond, not ponds, I guess, water features or whatever you're calling them to get that 1.8 acres?
Yeah, that's correct. The, through conversations with the watershed district, you have to go through this process of proving that it's, you know, that it's challenging to meet the, all of the requirements onsite. So we look to regional options to meet those standards. And then if there are any ways that we can still provide some sedimentation removal, then the watershed district expects, excuse me, expects those structures to be constructed. So yes, it's all part of the same permit.
So what's giving me a stomach ache tonight is we're talking about making things easier for future development, but the, but we're, in doing so, we're causing a significant impact to current property owners and residents. I noticed, we did not hear any public support tonight for option two. Do you have a sense on the gap on what it would take to get some more? Is there a gap that can be spanned that would get, that you would feel would get to consensus that we can proceed with option two with some property owner support? I just, I wrote down on my, I wrote two things down as I was just hearing your presentation as I was reflecting on open forum comments and all the comments we've heard is we've got an existing project that is for the benefit of future developers, but again, we're impacting current property owners very negatively. And so that just weighs very heavily on me. And so we, and so I'm wondering what that gap is to get, you know, some support for the project for those, by those residents. Because then also, I just feel like we just have an obligation to do no harm. And I feel like we haven't, we haven't hit that threshold, that we still, you know, we still have, you know, residents that are very unhappy with their current property condition, and we've impacted safety and enjoyment of those properties. And so I just, I sit here weighing heavily on option three. And I don't like not having a project. I don't like having, you know, I'll be supportive of the project. But as we've seen how it has manifested and the lack of trust, I'm really concerned. And so I will leave room. If there's an option for us to have some consensus, great. I'd like us to continue that. But if that gap is too big, I appreciate all of the work in bringing forward some options. And I hate turning, you know, on a, on a project that has a lot of positive aspects to it. But I just, I'm really troubled by the impact to property owners. And for what? For a future developer on a potential, you know, 1-point-some-acre component? Like, we're doing math, but, and it's aspirational. And again, with all good intention and due respect, but we're, we've created a ditch in somebody's yard that, you know, the kids can't cross the street safely. And so I just, that's what's weighing on me. So I guess in that, my question would be, do you feel like there is, with some time, some option to bridge that gap? Or are we just at a spot where we're not going to get there?
I'm certainly willing to invest the time to help bridge that gap. I'm not sure I can answer the question. But my commitment to, to meeting the needs of the project from where we started three years ago to now having, you know, heard from the residents and spoken to them and, you know... to now having, you know, heard from the residents and spoken to them and, you know, tried, trying to be out there with positivity, I, I'm willing to invest the time that it, that it takes to help bridge that gap, should the council and you, Mayor Bain, choose to go that direction. I understand, I understand where you're coming from.
What, part of what weighs on me, too, is the difference in cost between two and three is not much. And so if there is a way for, and we're going to have to spend some additional money to make this right. So if there is a way for us to spend some additional money and yet still have some project benefits, that's great. But also, I don't want to continue chasing something that just isn't going to happen. And so it's what makes this particular question challenging to make tonight is I just don't have a strong sense on what that gap is. Counsel, I don't know if you've had some other feedback or have some thoughts as well?
Tim, the, and the name fails me, Jason, I think, on the corner, 233rd.
Siri.
Siri. Any, has he, I mean, obviously talked about flattening that space. But in all the conversations I've had with just about everyone, other than maybe his basin and the Dahlbeck basin, if you will, seems like there's maybe some appetite to be able to make it so it's not so intrusive, so we get some benefit. Did, did he have any comments or any thoughts? You were able to connect with him?
Yeah. We spent some time in the field last week or the week, that was the week before. You know, and I think that in, in general, I've heard some feedback from residents that, you know, we support water quality. We, we support the lake. We want to do better for the lake. You know, I understand the heartburn, the disconnect between impacting property there for something in another spot. But, you know, if there is a better balance on some of these more impactful features, they're, they're all impactful. Don't get me wrong. I'm not, I'm not saying that any one's more or less impactful than the next. But that, that if there is a solution there to do some filling and recreate that safe space to cross, you know, make it, make these slopes at least mowable. You know, that, that even with a loss of volume, you know, we could maybe get to a point where it's acceptable. And that may not be in all cases. I think about basin one at the Dahlbeck basin and, and just how impactful that looks. You know, it, again, as I mentioned before, it's, it has a lot to do with how the storm sewer connects into that, into that basin. That's why the depth is there. But, you know, if that were to be filled in, but maybe basins two, three, and four could remain at the, at the much shall, excuse me, much shallower depths, that there would still be some treatment volume there. Well, scenarios are pretty easy to figure out, you know, and I've, I've got even some examples here. But if we, if there was a one acre of treatment, you know, again, to your point, Mayor Bain, is that, is that enough? You know, is that enough to really be impactful? The more investment, of course, the less treatment volume, the more expensive that credit becomes. This is going to be a very challenging area for developers to meet the stormwater standards anyway. So I think anything would help, even at higher cost. But that is certainly a factor.
Yeah, it almost seems like we're at a chokehold on the whole thing.
Would a design workshop with council members and property owners yourself be helpful? Would it, would it, would that be helpful? Or do you feel that you've got enough feedback and that isn't kind of going to result in moving, moving the conversation forward?
I, I would entertain that. I would, of course, attend that. You know, I, we've, we've heard from the residents. I appreciate them all still being here late into the night. And so if, you know, if, if that is a desire from the resident's perspective, and we want to sit down and talk through it again, even if ultimately you get to option three, you know, it, I'm, like I said before, I'm willing to invest that time, you know, to, to help make it right.
I, whatever we do next is going to have some impact, right? Like there is going to be another construction project. I just want it to be the next best move. I have also heard some support and property owners have expressed support of some level of project and, you know, some support, certainly of water quality. I, I guess I'd look to those in the room would be open. Would that be a helpful session that you would entertain? And some, do you want to come to the podium? Impromptu open forum?
I mean, you guys have just heard they planned this project out. It was supposed to take a month. It took three. They ran into a ton of problems with it. Obviously, I don't know if it was a lack of planning or just the site. Our house dates from 1930. They found an old sewer. They found gas lines that weren't supposed to be there. It's, to me, this sounds like a, I mean, cut your losses. The thing is not going to work. It's going to, they're running into more problems. It's going to look like a big ditch. It's going to have problems year after year after year. If you think this is the end of it, you know, stick around for five years. See what the maintenance bill is going to be. I mean, it's, if you haven't seen enough of this, you know, I invite you to come this summer and see the big tractor that they're going to plant right in front of my house. They've already assured us that they can assure us that that's not going to happen. And what about the next year when it has problems? You know, and I don't think it's worth it. Like I said, you know, if you want to make use of it, put a bike path. We have a huge park there. No one uses it anymore, you know? And we could get there. We could tie in with the other things and it would work. This just is not a good plan. You know, maybe the intention was good to start with, but, you know, contamination, lines that weren't supposed to be there, maintenance costs, put in another job. It just doesn't sound like it's going to work.
Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor?
I guess I would be willing to meet as well as I'm sure everyone would be. Again, just to make sure that option three is a valid option. It's not just pushed aside. Partly because, I mean, just quick notes through all this. You know, there's, is there any accountability for discrepancies in the size and the mistakes that were made during this whole project? Because I don't think it should have been happening at all. But there's vast discrepancies in the sizes and the measurements. And now we're all talking about how do we fix it? It shouldn't have happened in the first place. So who's accountable for that? I don't know the answer to that. But the other notes I had for option two, is there a credit for the homeowners? Tax-wise or monetary or whatever it may be? Because why does a developer get a tax advantage or whatever it may be, an incentive? It comes out of their pockets, in my mind. Not really, though, but it does affect the property, that is. Why is it fair to destroy their properties to help somebody else out to get some kind of free money or whatever? And I don't even understand that. But I'd love to hear more about that at the said discussion. And why is that okay? What's the ongoing maintenance cost for option three? I think we know the answer, right? None. There's zero ongoing maintenance cost. Okay? Option three, the water will still reach the lake, but allegedly be less filtered, just like 900-plus other residences around the lake in vast open land. I believe the watershed, who is, to my knowledge, pushing this, bought a huge parcel down the corner of Lake Three. How about turn that into a giant filtration if it's not already? Because they spent, I believe, $600,000 on the land. Could be wrong in the number. There's my quick thoughts, so.
Appreciate that. Could we just, for clarification purposes, just talk through, the questions come up about kind of the impact of this decision? So could we just get some staff comments on what's happened since? One thing that comes to mind is we have parted ways with the contractor. Amanda, you're nodding. True, Amanda Ryan, could we just kind of talk through kind of financial impact of the project?
It's an awkward situation, right?
It is.
Right? So we've had a lot of projects together and a lot of successful projects together. We've done a lot of cutting-edge projects, been the innovators in stormwater. And then we've done some conservative stuff. This was one of those innovative ones. New agreement executed with Watershed District to offset stormwater requirements, to allow us to continue to allow the downtown to redevelopment into the zero setback that is in our comp plan and the city's vision. Without finding alternative ways to address stormwater, they're going to be required to do stuff that's going to take building footprints away in the downtown area. Yeah, just look at a list of projects that we've been successful on stormwater. You know, the Forest Lake High School water reuse, City Hall retrofits got grant money, won project awards, stormwater quality vault structure on Forest Road, second one in the States. The Bathory Metrics, where we surveyed all the ponds and developed a maintenance schedule for public works and they can identify funding appropriately. And then the animal that's always been sitting in the room is how can we continue to allow downtown development to occur? So we go through a large downtown stormwater study. Basically, three areas are identified. And then in those areas, other areas, you know, around the community are identified where stormwater improvement projects can happen. Very excited. Process is going very fast, right? Maybe hindsight, too fast. We're trying to beat some development that was potentially going to happen, the gone property. There's some others that were, you know, being talked about, but wanted to have this ready. So when we got into it, you know, we thought it had a great plan, worked very closely with city staff. Project was entirely in public right of way. You think, kind of had a lot, a lot of stuff crossed. Probably missed the boat on the coordination that we typically do with our street projects, where we have enough time and have planned, you know, far enough ahead to be able to reach out. And when you look at it all, you know, to keep things moving, we have offered to cover our time. So when Tim keeps saying "our time," that's literally coming out of our pockets, our time. None of that's been charged to the city since the city's decided to separate ways with the contractor. And moving forward to whatever our finish line is with this project, we're covering our own time. We've also offered whatever decision the city chooses for correction to cover 50% of that, too. So just to keep things moving, I don't know exactly what to tell you. But, you know, if we get too less of a volume, it's kind of a hard situation, right? I mean, you get, you're going to get some credits. I mean, you know, you saw like what the credit per acre is. Even if it's a half acre, you're going to get some payback in the future when that develops. Without these types of projects, our downtown is going to have to explore for another way to address stormwater rules and requirements of the Watershed District. And that's something that we have fought a number of times. And we've gotten a few things changed in some of the rules. More else, Rice Creek, we've been more successful in getting some. They have a better track record of projects from here to the Mississippi and the bigger communities. So they have some of those example, project examples, case studies they can use and, you know, see really, yeah, we may do this, but really our benefit was so small. But here, we're dealing with some very strict rules and trying to follow the visionary of the downtown stuff. This is one of the areas that was readily available in public right of way and could provide some of the volume to off-street, offset an actual project. So if we're not, if we're going to go differently, you know, maybe, maybe there's a option, whatever, that we haven't discussed tonight. But I, gut tells me just the vibe that I feel, 50/50, that probably half of them don't even, don't want to go down that path. Maybe some do, but then at the end, I don't know what that volume is going to be. But I'm going to guess it's probably going to be less than an acre. So that's what I would paint for the picture. Is that worth it? Dollar-wise, it would pay back your costs probably, I mean, if what we're in for, for right now, but it's not going to offset a project in the downtown area. So they're going to have to explore alternative ways to address that. And with the new rules and requirements of DOLI that we're having to deal with on top of this on developments and site improvements, that even makes stormwater more difficult on a site like this. Because hindsight, if you probably even look back at Lighthouse Lofts, those would probably not exactly fulfill all the DOLI requirements of today's standards.
Right.
And that was just a project six years ago, so it's changed that fast. Counsel, what are your thoughts?
Well, it's difficult working around the Watershed District, that's for sure. It's caused a lot of expense.
Remember, even if we tear down a building and replace it exactly in its same footprint, just because it's over 5,000 square feet, we trigger all the rules and requirements. 5,000 square feet.
The same can be said for, for public street projects, too.
Right.
In full reconstruction of impervious, requires treatment.
Yeah. It just weighs on me is, this is a, you know, this is a citywide challenge that we have. So we have as council, it's a, it's a challenge that developers have. Anybody that's going to do something downtown is going to have this. But I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time weighing that against the, like, today impact on property owners. And so it just feels like we've asked, you know, six or seven, half a dozen or more property owners to really carry that weight. And it's a lot. And if we haven't gotten to a spot where it's acceptable, I'm challenged to continue. But I mean, but I also, again, what, so, so timeline, so I was like, okay, so what are our variables here? We have a number of different options. We also have a variable of time. We are late March. Nobody wants us to get deep into summer and to not have a resolution to this. I appreciate the aggressive timeline that you put together, Tim, of just kind of every council meeting, we're doing something to keep this moving. If, if there is, and maybe it's an offline conversation between yourself and property owners, if there is some opportunity to have a sit-down with council and some sort of a working session with council, I think, I'm in kind of a moment of let's consider all options. I don't want us to get baked, you know, baked into a plan that is premature if we haven't had all of the conversations that need to be had, but.
Just curious, you mentioned there was a couple of locations identified. Did I understand that correctly? And we chose this one because it was all public right of way?
And the volume that this would generate.
Okay. The other sites were lower volume primarily, or?
Yeah, the, the alternative, another alternative considered was a neighborhood on the south side of the lake that would have been closer to 20 to 30 of these similar shallow, you know, features on a much smaller scale, but, but more widespread throughout the neighborhood. So there's, there would have been more residential impact there. There's some projects identified by the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District in their diagnostic study, but nothing to provide a substantial volume. Even that south side of the lake project would have, would have been very impactful.
So even if this project was restored and we get how much, two and a half acres?
Yeah, as, as designed, it would be two and a half acres of offset treatment, yes.
What's the plan? I mean, that's going to just cover one quadrant, basically, of downtown. So really, what are we talking about doing for, you know, the old theater building?
And that's where we've been able to maybe bite off a small piece. But certainly, I don't think anyone's feeling like we've solved the challenge. And that's part of us, you know, as a city, trying to contribute some, something to that and to make some headway. But certainly, there is a larger unanswered component.
These locations that have been identified in and around the lake, is there a proximity to the lake that they need to fall within? Or, I mean, is there any possibility of the work that they're doing up by Tim's Marina that they're, does that create credit? I mean, I don't, I don't understand the Watershed District's rules as well as I trust you do, but.
The Watershed District does a lot with wetland restoration. And you can't use a wetland for stormwater treatment, that it would be considered an impact. So then those impacts often are not, not permitted for, for use for stormwater management and stormwater treatment. So finding, finding land that's high enough above the lake that isn't a wetland for any location that drains into Forest Lake is, is difficult.
Describe the agreement and what area it covers. Do you have an agreement with Watershed?
Yes.
Describe the area that, you know, this would go to.
Yeah, so the, right now, the, the agreement that's in place at the Watershed is, I'll maybe take even one step back, is new. The Watershed District has not ever done one of these credit agreements before. So they understand the need to, to bank some credit, if you will, to help with offset treatment in the future. The, the agreement, as it sits right now, covers some high priority redevelopment areas in the downtown corridor. There, we also explored options for Broadway Avenue, that drains to a different location. And then also up the 61 corridor, which also drains to a different location that bypasses the lake. So it's really just this, this space right now that's, that's earmarked for redevelopment or high priority redevelopment that drains directly into Forest Lake. So it's all within the same drainage boundary, you know, of course, which gets larger. If you go east of the lake, that drainage, that drainage boundary gets larger. you go east of the lake, that drainage, that drainage boundary gets larger. But the center line of 61 is basically the Watershed Divide.
And the area that's identified in that agreement is what would be first come, first served. So if it wasn't gone, that came, or the theater building came first, they would get first right at their credits.
And one other thing that we put in that agreement was, because we have, Watershed is constantly making their rules so much stricter and harder to follow, we included, I think it's at 25 here, that whatever would come in would be able to come in under today's rule, so we wouldn't have to worry about if we have two acres' worth of, of water retention that actually it's only worth one, because they've changed the rules to make it even, you know, more strict than it is today. So we tried to be as, really aggressive with the Watershed. We probably spent six months aggressively negotiating the agreement to try to maximize the, what we were getting. But it's really hard when you have rules that make it almost impossible to develop. I mean, that's the, and that's the challenge, is in absence of something like this, those sites just, it's just cost prohibitive to redevelop them. And so, you know, people ask what's happening in downtown Forest Lake. And this came up as part of the downtown study and part of us wanting to be more proactive in our redevelopment of downtown. And one of the barriers has been, you know, barriers to redevelopment has been the Watershed District rules and the requirements that each of those, in absence of another solution like this or a regional solution, that each one of those properties need to manage on their own. And, you know, again, to highlight one of the comments that Ryan just said is, you know, even, those rules are constantly changing. And even the Lighthouse Lofts project, what they did for site management would not be acceptable today. And so that's just the environment that we're in and trying to react to that. And that was a lot of the why to this project. Now, again, that doesn't forgive the immediate impact of property owners and the lack of performance from the contractor and all of the things that have gone wrong. Just trying to provide some basis of what, what's the motive? Why are we trying so hard to make this work? And that's why. And also, I appreciate, somebody wants to access the lake and have a place that they can mow and that is safe for their children and all of those things, like those are also very real. But when you're looking at this project, I'm like, why are you trying so hard? That's why. Because it's, it's impactful to future downtown development.
Just to clear, maybe clarification, there was a comment that, you know, that's some kind of subsidy or something. These developers are paying for these credits upwards of about $300,000, right? So this isn't like, this isn't the developer getting a $300,000 credit, obviously. So just, I know that there was a comment and there was some question about that. So there's no subsidy in this, this whole thing. This is hard cost that a developer would incur by developing downtown.
Correct.
The subsidy would maybe be that the city has provided, we affronted this, like, we have, you know, we have provided the vehicle and there's, you know, staff timing into that. But the thought is, yes, that it does cash flow in the future.
So instead of a developer in that downtown area having to provide stormwater treatment, which would be a pond or infiltration basin themselves in the downtown footprint, they would buy that volume credits from this project and pay back the city for whatever that dollar amount is decided on.
Okay, so the city would get credit, so the credit, so the city would get credit on back, then?
Well, you'll get the money back, whatever, say, easy numbers. What if it's, they get, their development's one acre. Let's just say your, your, your credit was $300,000 per acre. They would pay the city with, through the development agreement, $300,000 to offset their stormwater requirements of the Watershed District, so they could then build at zero setback. So if the theater building was, say, an acre. Otherwise, they would have to build to a footprint they could fit, plus then fit stormwater treatment onsite.
Council, thoughts on, I know there's a question out there now, we'll get back. I just wanna get, do we proceed, how do we wanna proceed?
Who's the hope, what's it, go ahead.
I just think it would be a shame to just scrap this thing and go back to the original. If there's some, if there's some appetite to work with the neighbors to, to at least get something out of this thing. We spent a little, a lot of time, there's energy, angst on this thing. It'd just be nice. And if it doesn't work at the end of the day, then, then maybe, but I'd like to give it, see if it's one more shot at that, especially if Bolton and Make is willing to do that and it is on their dime, it's not costing the taxpayers any more money. I, I just, we've gone a long ways here and just to start over. There's other, you know, the Basin Seven in front of McCormick's, my understanding was he had no problem with that at all. And so is there opportunities to maybe get some more flow or from areas that aren't impactful like that, where people aren't walking across and accessing the lake? I don't know. I mean, maybe that's a place to, to at least have the start of the conversation.
Mayor, Council, may I suggest that Tim and myself or our staff meet with the property owners individually to get that, hey, what can we agree on? And be able to bring that back to you, maybe by April 8th or at the workshop on the 15th. I just fear that if we waited till the workshop on April 15th to have a working workshop, then we're gonna get past the construction time period we would want. Contractors are gonna already be bidding pretty heavily on some stuff. And if construction doesn't start right away, if it's raining or something, then we get stuck in the middle of summertime. It's a little harder to get restoration when it's a little drier, too. But, so if, that would be a better approach and maybe we even have the resident sign off, yep, this is, I'm, I'm good with this, if this is what's gonna happen on my property. That way, when we do come back, they could be here, too. But we can expedite that process and try to stay in line with an early construction schedule, so they don't have to deal with this all summer.
I agree with your expediency. I think also council would be open to a special meeting. So if it's helpful to have us there, include us by all means. If it's easier to do individual conversations, certainly, I'm happy to support that. Council will come to, council will come to meet whenever we need on this topic. I know we've got a couple of questions from the audience. I also know we're late, so respectful for everyone's time. I'm happy to take a couple of more questions or comments. If you wanna come to the podium, though, so that we can hear you on mic? And I believe Aaron may have had another comment as well.
So, just to clarify, to make this really simple, you guys said it was okay for a portion of a neighborhood to sacrifice their front lawn to subsidize the downtown possible future development?
That was what this project was approved for, yes.
And would you guys be okay with that, doing that in your lawns? I mean, you seem to think it's okay. So I'm just wondering if you guys would be willing to give up some of your lawns?
I don't think anyone's saying it's okay. We've, we've had a number of conversations.
Well, you voted on it, sir.
Well, but we, but we realize the issue. We're trying to make a fix here. So the fact that we're saying we're okay with it, we're not okay.
Okay.
It's clear, we're not okay with it.
We're not okay with it, with the outcome, for sure.
Okay. But how did it get passed? I mean, how did this get passed? You, sir, were talking about all these, you know, projects that you've done, but to, to public land, to city land, not to homeowners. Nobody, nobody reached out to homeowners that were gonna be affected. You know what had, what happened? I walked out and saw the surveyors from, I don't know, Bolton, whatever, and they told me what was going on. That is so disrespectful. I have been in this town for 20 years, paying taxes, taking care of my lawn. Admittedly, my lawn does not look as good as these guys' lawn, that's just the way it goes, but we have been taking care of that. The storm drain, again, I have put in lots of money of my own money to put on the lakefront, a rain guard, nobody talked about that, not even the watershed, you know? So I just wanna make it clear that this is done on the backs of the taxpayers. And not all the taxpayers, a small neighborhood. And everybody thought that was okay until we said no. So I wanna put an exclamation mark by that. Will it ever sit okay with us? Probably never, because this was done so disrespectfully. So in the future, everybody, talk to the people that you're gonna be affecting and those taxpayers. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
More or less along the lines of what she said, you were taking money from, future money from developers to pay off the destruction of the properties, is essentially what's happened. And I understand that in the last meeting at all, not even remotely. It's appalling to hear that. It sucks for everybody. I don't wanna see you guys go to the south side of the lake to destroy 20 properties over there, either, whether it be shallow or not. Again, there should be huge accountability for the mismanagement of this project, just the way everything was handled, the delivery, everything, everything sucks. It all sucks about it. I apologize to everybody that's had to sit here this long and hear it. I mean, especially Chief's just sitting here listening to all this, 'cause if it was my property and if, in the future, this expands more, mismanagement of this type of action, if it was my property, I'd be sitting out on there and he'd have to send somebody to come get me out of the ditch, 'cause I'd be sitting in the lawn chair every day protesting this. I swear to God, I would've. It's ridiculous. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you don't wanna spend more money on money that was already spent to cover it all up, but I think that should really be an option that's expressed. And figure out something else for the development. I wanna see the downtown develop. Quite frankly, it's mismatched. We'd love to see it developed. I'd love to more than anybody. It's a business owner here as well, but there's gotta be another way, so.
Thank you. One, one more, yes. And then we do have to move on to another, sounds like we will have another meeting on this topic.
So your wife mentioned that we've been here for 20 years and we've seen the downtown. We like the downtown. We always kinda thought, maybe we could do something more with the downtown. But, I mean, to be quite honest with you, it's like, it's not just the downtown, it's the entire lake. And it just seems to me that we've seen how this place has changed over 20 years. One of our neighbors one time said, he's gone now, but he used to say, this is gonna be the Edina of, you know, St. Paul. And we kinda laughed at him, but it's like, it's really grown. And it's grown in ways that I, we didn't expect. And it's like, I think to say that, oh, well, you know, we, they're not gonna come up with anything else, no other solutions, nothing. We've gotta dig holes in front of these people's lawns, otherwise we'll never be able to develop downtown. I think it's ludicrous. Give it 10 years. I mean, I just, I, I think it's like, it seems to me about the most unamendative way you can manage this, you know? I think there's gotta be a better way. And if there's not one now, wait 10 years and you'll have it. The other thing is that, you know, I don't know, I've, I've lived in 20, in Minnesota most of my life. I've been to several different lakes. I've been, it's like, all right, as much as you wanna say it, this is prime property downtown, you know? And anybody who gets in there should feel damn lucky that they can develop it. And if, if they're not willing to go there, yeah, let them go. We're close to the Twin Cities. We're 30 miles from the Twin Cities. We've got a beautiful lake. We've got a downtown that could be developed to look really good, you know? That really would be a huge opportunity for anybody. Why sell yourself short? I think we can afford to wait.
Thank you. Ryan, Tim, have direction on next steps? On having some additional conversation, bringing back to council what might, what may be options? Anything further from council as far as guidance?
Just one more comment. If there's, if there's absolutely no appetite for this, I, I understand, but I think it's at least worth exploring one more time and see if there's something that can be done here.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Let's not delay this too much into April, but another round of conversation, I think, is warranted. All right. I appreciate, it's late, I appreciate everyone being here tonight and sticking through our agenda to get to this point of the conversation, so really appreciate it. Let's move into staff updates and Abby.
No special report.
Christina?
Um, just to let everybody know with the snow today, Republic Service did have to pull their trucks in, so services will be delayed a day all week long, so.
All week long?
Yep.
Okay. Amanda?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Dave?
No updates.
Back to the Republic, can we do some social media notifications and just reminders?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Ryan?
Mayor of State Council, a lot of things going on here in the next few weeks. Tomorrow is the pre-construction meeting for County State Aid Highway 33. So upon that meeting, we'll do a definite schedule for the contractor and then the county set up a pre-construction open house here at City Hall, April 4th, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The Water Efficiency Grant, member of the current grants, ends the second quarter, June 30th, but we did submit a grant application for 2024 through 2026. Don't know, we'll have to wait and see if we're successful on that, but that would still run the same program that we've been doing with the toilets, washing machines, washers, and irrigation components. Eureka Avenue, April 15th, public open house, 4:30 to 6:30. With that, we'll kinda have meeting greet to start, but we do plan on doing a presentation, PowerPoint presentation at 5:15 to the residents who attain that, attend that. And then we'll be at the April 22nd City Council meeting to discuss that as well, plan on presenting the same PowerPoint there for Eureka Avenue. The 12th Street closure, we obviously delayed that 'cause of the weather for Mr. Carwash tie-in for the water and sewer utilities. So we're tentatively looking around April 8th, but we'll re-engage that by social media and the variable message sign once that gets nailed, nailed down. So there might be some work starting on site, so there will be some activity, but it was just, there's too much risk to, so kinda told them they're gonna have to change that, so. And we've already started working with, like, RVs and whoever else is on that line, 'cause they're gonna have to, you know, coordinate with some staff. So we're probably gonna delay the water main work until like 10 o'clock at night, and then the sewer stuff could go first and stuff like that. I do just wanna quickly point out, though, you know, if we are gonna be taking a different direction on aesthetic lighting along corridors, that is a significant budget discussion that needs to happen as soon as possible, because I just, you know, think of a list of roadways that is, that are here in the next five years of projects, just on paper, I'm looking at 5 million. So if that's something that we're gonna push, you know, Eureka Avenue, that's a whole other conversation, because we got transmission lines above us that cross over the road two times, and we're gonna have to go through a bunch of special sighting, the pole and arcing distance and stuff like that, and what the uniformal light, if there was a light through there. You know, the trail that we're proposing is on the east side, then basically the lights might be pushed out into the lake. I mean, that's how tight that corridor is to fit a trail, and that wasn't in our scoping of the project when the city staff submitted the bonding bill, you know, stuff like that. So, you know, that's, that's a change, if that's the route that we're going. 97's never been talked about having the decorative lighting along it. So we just need to have those conversations pretty early if we're gonna wanna start budgeting and planning for that. Pro, we did get the blue lighting poles approved by State Aid a few years ago, so it is a State Aid eligible item, but it's just not something that we have funds for that are in these co-op agreement projects. And then if you throw Fenway in there, Eureka, Harrow, County, County State Highway 32, we don't have that in there right now with the cost estimate, so that's stuff that we just need to tackle sooner than later, so we can account for that.
Or choose to not tackle it, if that's where we go.
Busy, busy, busy.
Thank you, Ryan. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, as you know from last week's weekly report, Sergeant Bruce Peterson is retiring this week. This Friday is his last day of, excuse me, employment with the Forest Lake Police Department and City of Forest Lake. I just wanna publicly thank Sergeant Bruce Peterson for his 23 years of service with us, the Forest Lake Police Department, and 34 years of service in law enforcement. That's all I have for you.
Mayor, Council, I have one update. It's probably not a surprise, but burning restrictions were lifted today, until further notice.
Kevin?
No updates.
All right. Let's move to council updates. Councilmember Roberts?
I attended the Vietnam Veterans Day event at the Legion, which is done really nicely. And our own Diane Fineman from Forest Lake did a lot in legislation, backed 17 years to get that recognized for the state, so nice job to her. It's her last year of overseeing that, so thank you to her for that.
Councilmember Valente?
Just congratulations to Bruce Peterson on his retirement and his service is much appreciated. That's it.
Councilmember Hossnick?
Okay, I attended the school board meeting that happened
Okay, I attended the school board meeting that happened last week. And not, nothing real earth-saturn, but they go through their reports, same as we do with the workshops and the building and ground, City of Forest Lake Communications Committee, all these various meetings. And the thing that's notable about their meeting that particular night is the amount of donations that they received that night. And they range anywhere from $25 out to $8,000. So it added up to about, just about $21,000 in donations for various things in the school. So a lot of, lots of support there. And they have seven retirements coming up. So lots happening there. So, and that was about it for now. I also attended the Vietnam program at the Legion, which was pretty darn well attended for the weather that was, they were competing going with. So they had a couple of people had to counsel out. But it was a really good, really good meeting. And kudos to Diane for all of her hard work for all those years. So luckily, she's not going to do it anymore. But one of her sisters is going to take it over now. So it's a good thing. Also, congratulations to Bruce Peterson for his retirement and all the years that he spent helping us out as a police officer. I know him well, good guy. And we want to wish him well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
Yeah, I'd go. Those thoughts, and I really appreciate his service. As I mentioned earlier, I attended the joint fire board meeting. So we had a really great discussion. And that was a useful time. I just did a quick follow-up on our conversation from last week about some, excuse me, some land use. I understand there's a conversation happening this week with Spike and Hools. And I just, I just wondered if there was a consensus ever made and what direction we want to go with that. So it's just kind of a, kind of curiosity of where, what that looks like. And just let them know that we're looking to have a conversation, or?
Well, that was closed session. So I, I guess I'm going to say, I, without too many details, that I thought the consensus was to have a conversation.
Yeah.
A quick, couple of quick updates. Congratulations to Sergeant Peterson. Thank you for your time in Forest Lake and your service to our community. And just, gosh, all the best on retirement, much deserved. Also attended the joint fire board meeting, which was kind of well-covered on our topics this evening. Two legislative topics of consideration. One, just a heads up that, and appreciation to Commissioner Miron for kind of leading the charge for us. Last Monday, we were all in workshops, and he had attended the Representative Stauber event and had an opportunity to have a conversation about some potential federal funding that is attached to a request from, kind of a joint request from Washington County and the city on, for the realignment of Forest Road. So he was able to have that, have that initial conversation with Congressman Stauber. And that precipitated a follow-up conversation that Commissioner Miron, myself, and Christine are going to have with Representative Stauber when he's here on Thursday. So just heads up that that is happening. And we have his attention on that topic. And really appreciate Commissioner Miron's leadership on helping us make those connections. On a similar, on a different topic, but also related to legislative action, I've had a number of phone calls from different elected officials, text messages from elected officials, and also a couple of resident phone calls. Both some concerns on, there's a pair of bills, there's a House bill and there's a corresponding Senate bill that relates to what's happening in the legislature on multifamily housing. There are a number of cities that have taken on resolutions to oppose aspects of that fund, of those bills. Resolutions in progress of sessions like this are always challenging because the resolutions are changing and, or that the bills themselves are changing. And so we're kind of throwing a dart at a moving target. But I just wanted to get council's appetite on considering a resolution. I would work with Christina to work with some of what's been done, A, by the League of Minnesota Cities, but then also some of our neighboring communities that have considered that resolution. I also had an opportunity to talk to Commissioner Miron just right before this meeting. They are also, Washington County is also considering a resolution. That could take any number of approaches. And I would actually wait till we had some time to actually dive in a little bit more deep, deeper into what does that bill entail and what might be the position that the city would want to take. But I at least wanted to get some appetite first before we do any work. As you look at what is included in those bills, there's a lot of impact to local control and a lot of impact to local zoning that are concerning to me. And so I feel that there is a way for us to have some consensus language. And it's probably appropriate for us to weigh in and timely for us to weigh in. But again, I don't want to start that process with Christina without some thoughts from council first. So.
I'd be favorable.
Yeah, because from what I've heard about that bill, we need to have a consensus on it. You know, some kind of a proclamation, whatever, on this thing. Because, yeah, we lose control on a lot of things.
It's impactful. You know, we did not, there's times where I'm supportive of us taking a position, and there's times where the legislative process, I feel like, just needs to move, move forward. We did not take a lot of positions, especially related to the cannabis bill. And there just was a lot of local impact to that. But I just, I don't want to give, lose an opportunity for us to weigh in on a topic. And it certainly is more, far more impactful to us than the cannabis bill was. I just feel like this is probably a time for us to consider taking some action. So Christine and I can work on some language and also kind of look at some guidance from the league and float some language past council to see if there's an area of consensus. I do feel strongly, if we're going to do a resolution, it should be a 5-0. And if we're not at a spot of 5-0, it's probably not worth us raising our hand. But I think, again, there might be some language that we would all agree on. So.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that. That is the end of our planned agenda this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.